Good evening and welcome to Chaska City Council Meeting for Monday, March 19th. We call the meeting to order at 7 o'clock. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, welcome, welcome. We got a full docket tonight, so I think we're gonna get cracking right away. So, Nate, will you call roll please?
Yes, Councilmember Schultz. Councilmember Bowe?
Here.
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Councilmember Geisler?
Here.
Mayor Winchell?
Here.
Councilmember Schultz is, I think, actually out of the country for work, so he will not be joining us tonight. And there is a possibility if the meeting goes a little late that Councilmember Bowe will have to leave as well for another meeting, so, but we'll see if we can get through it here quickly. I don't know if we will...
That's a challenge.
Yeah, that's a challenge. All right, next we're gonna move to item number four, adopting the agenda. Now, do we have to make any changes because we're at...
Yeah, so first of all, item 7J, we're gonna remove from the agenda and move it to a future... There's no issues, we just procedurally have to do that after the AW is approved and that hasn't gone through yet.
Okay.
Second thing, just a note, there's the addition of 7N, which is rescheduling of the public hearing that was on the snow meeting night, so that's on there. And then the third thing is just recommendation that at the end of the meeting, we take up Charles Kelly's appointment.
Okay.
So we could add that as, we could add that as item number, let's say, 12A.
Okay. All right, does somebody wanna make a motion with those amendments? And do I have to read that, loop that, that public hearing? Do I have to physically read it, give the time and date even under consent?
We publish it.
Okay.
And we send out.
Well, I just know whenever we do them here, we always have to, okay. So if somebody wants to make a motion...
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Councilmember Bowe?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Geisler to adopt the agenda, basically removing J, adding N, and adding 12A to the agenda. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries, moves us on to item number five, visitor presentation. Is there anyone here under visitor presentation? Visitor presentation. Not seeing anyone moving, I am gonna go ahead and move on to item number six, which is approving the minutes of the February 26th council meeting. Again, discussion, if not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Rowe?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Geisler approving the minutes of the February 26th meeting. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries, I'm on the edge here. Rocking it. All right, moves us to item number seven, which is consent agenda. And again, if you have a agenda out there, we're removing J, which, is it J?
7J.
J, which is the conditional use permit for the transmission line, and we're adding 7N, which is we are rescheduling a public hearing to April 2nd, 7 o'clock in the council chambers. Discussion, if not, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Rowe?
Second.
By Bowe, second by Rowe. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Moves us to item number eight, which is adopt resolution 2018-27, approving preliminary site and building plan, preliminary plat for Aldi's Chipotle and Starbucks in Hazelton Plaza.
Mayor, Councilmember, the item in front of you tonight is coming back from the Planning Commission. This is the preliminary plat and zoning for the proposed Aldi, Starbucks and Chipotle locations up in Hazelton Plaza adjacent to Kohl's. You'll see that the Planning Commission is recommending moving forward with this action item, and Liz is here tonight to go through her presentation.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. We've got a preliminary site and building plan, preliminary plat and zoning ordinance amendment tonight. So the site is located on the northwest corner of the Hazelton Plaza development, so as denoted on this exhibit, so it's kind of kiddy corner to the existing Kohl's site. So in January of 2018, that is when the concept plan was officially approved for this project. We're looking at a three and a half acre site that's currently vacant. We've got some trees on there that'll be preserved, and it's currently zoned planned commercial development, specifically PCD-15. So specifically what we're looking at, a preliminary site and building plan for the Aldi's building, the Chipotle building, and the Starbucks building, and then a preliminary plat for three different lots for all three of those establishments, and then a zoning ordinance amendment to PCD-15, which is merely changing the building coverage percentage from 17% to 25%, which is consistent with some of our other commercial developments like Supertarget and the Chaska Commons, and then incorporating the new plans for this project into that area. So we've got a site plan in front of us on this exhibit, so you, as you can see, you can see the three different buildings on the site. Aldi's is situated kind of, kind of on the southern portion of the site, Chipotle is more in the center and north part, and then Starbucks will basically be in that northeast corner of the site. The Starbucks will have a drive-through component wrapping around it, and we did ask for them to provide a drive-through analysis as a part of this preliminary to give us an understanding of how it will operate compared with other existing sites. So based on that study, they did show or indicate that the drive-through that provided, that they're providing for this site is ideal because it will provide an eight-car stacking capacity, whereas their ideal setting is seven cars, so they're providing more than enough than what they typically need. They also provided a parking analysis, which kind of looked at the three different establishments and how they coexist together, having off, or different peak time hours. So with that in mind, and kind of looking at their existing parking analysis of other locations around the Twin Cities, they have shown and proven that the parking they're providing will work for the site. And in addition to that, they do have a reciprocal easement agreement over the Kohl's parking lot, which will give them additional parking needs if needed. The outdoor patios were discussed last time, and they did move the Chipotle patio more towards the north to be under that mature shade cover there now, so we're happy with that change. And they also incorporated several pedestrian connections that were brought up during the concept plan that were incorporated tonight in the preliminary. So a few of those being the one connecting to the Highway 41 Public Trail on the west side of the site, central pedestrian connection, providing connection between Aldi's and the Chipotle and Starbucks, and then a connection on the east side gaining access to that existing sidewalk there to provide access into Starbucks. Another big item of concern during the concept was this idea of how the site was configured and where the buildings were located. So as you can see tonight, the location of the buildings are in the exact same spot that you saw during the concept plan. So they did provide kind of an analysis in terms of the constraints that they were faced against to basically give you an understanding of why the buildings are located where they are tonight. So I would say the, the major pieces of that was there needed to be exposure for the Kohl's building and signage, as you're kind of seeing in that focal color on the exhibit, as well as exposure for the Aldi sign. I think it was discussed during the concept of perhaps reconfiguring the buildings to be more balanced and showing a building more on the northwest corner of the site, and basically putting a building there would prove as a conflict for the exposure for those signs that they need for Kohl's and Aldi's. And I think the Aldi's building was, was also asked as to why it wasn't located on the northwest corner there, and I think one of the main reasons was you couldn't, again, see the Kohl's sign if the Aldi's building was located there, as well as the concern for the poor soils that are in that location. So that's kind of the analysis and explanation that they've given as a part of their submittal.
So, so if I could ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
There's a big sign on 41, it's got Kohl's huge on it. That doesn't play into the, into this equation?
I mean, no. They needed full exposure for their wall sign on the actual building.
And they have that ability to determine that?
Kohl's did have their own criteria that needed to be met in order for them to sign up on these plans.
Like I said, I mean, if that's what we gotta follow, but it just seems like we're not balancing that parking and utilizing that property the way it should be to me. I don't know, but...
Typically, these commercial developments have covenants in them that protect, like if you're, if you're a user going in, that they might take a site that's tucked back more, and they'll do it as long as they make sure that their view shed is protected to the road.
Okay.
So in terms of the landscape plan, we've just highlighted a couple areas where they can improve, providing more plantings or more coniferous plantings, and obviously we'll work with the applicant as they come in for final to address those.
Liz, if you can go back to there.
Yep.
Where's the, where's the trash enclosure?
So we have two trash enclosures, one for Starbucks, which is located right here. And actually, this site plan shows its more accurate location. They did move it southerly a little bit to open up this view shed or sightline here. So Starbucks is on the south side here, and then Chipotle has theirs kind of on the westerly side of their site.
It just seems like we generally try to put those in somewhere not in the open, and that's about as open as there is, ever had one.
Are they gonna shield them in some way?
Yeah, they will be enclosed with brick and, two colors of brick that'll match the buildings, so those enclosures are required.
And that's the only place they could come up with, huh?
Yeah, I mean, site is constraining as it is, so...
How do they get to those to empty it? The one in the back there?
Well, they've figured out how to maneuver the garbage trucks back there to gain access to them, so that, I mean, all those pieces are looked at as they're looking for locations for trash enclosures. And I've also provided just the exterior elevations of all these three establishments, so they are showing consistent materials and colors throughout all three of these buildings. So they're utilizing the same brick colors that are consistent with kind of the Chaska color that you see traditionally around town, and then they're also incorporating two colors that are present in the Hazelton Plaza development today. So you would see that on the monument signage and Kohl's and so forth. So in terms of providing consistency with the development, they are showing that and with...
Is that like Kohl's brick there? Is that what that's supposed to be shown?
I'm sorry, what?
Is that supposed to be like the brick at Kohl's?
Yes, so the darker colored brick, there's two darker color bricks that you'll see on the Hazelton Plaza development, and they're showing that same color in the buildings. And then the lighter color brick that you can faintly see on this drawing is the Chaska color.
Just looks really dark.
Looks real dark.
So in conclusion, the overall uses do meet the permitted uses for this zoning district that they're in. There is a emphasis on pedestrian-friendly retail center or lifestyle center for this development, so that's kind of where our comments of providing adequate pedestrian connections came from, and they did address those in this preliminary. They also addressed the notion of tying the buildings together for the Hazelton Plaza development and just fitting in with Chaska overall. And then in terms of parking, they are showing and indicating to us that there will be enough parking on this site for all three uses. So with that, we are asking you to make a motion to adopt resolution number 2018-27, which is approving the preliminary, preliminary site and building plan and preliminary plat for Aldi, Chipotle and Starbucks. And then another motion to adopt ordinance number 946, which is approving the zoning ordinance amendment to PCD-15. I'm happy to answer any other questions that you have, otherwise the applicants are here as well.
Crickets. Anyone? I voiced mine.
The, would be the east side of the site, you know, that still has that pad, I think it's the east side.
Mm-hmm.
What can we do to have them keep better care of that area? I mean, there seems to be a lot of tall weeds, you know, during the summer, and it's just kind of a vacant lot. I mean, do we have any enforcement on that?
Yeah, so we do, are you talking about the grassy area or the paved area?
All of it.
All of it. Well, we do require the grassy areas to be mowed. We can talk to them about the...
It's like where the lights are and things, you know, weeds and stuff kind of grown up through there, and hopefully that site'll get developed at some point.
Well, I think this is gonna help, so that, yeah.
I know they were working on this corner first and then market that eastern side to try and figure out how to get some destination retail, something happening over there which would address that issue, but until that point happens, you're right, make sure some maintenance is happening.
What are the construction plans?
For starting, I think they want to start as soon as the spring, when the snow melts, so...
Completion estimation?
Probably by fall of this year.
So when I look at the site drawings that show up in here, it shows a much lighter color than the one you were showing, so it's, I'm just curious, which is the more accurate?
These images are very constrained on here, so until you blow it up, then you can see all of the detail and color, so it looks very dark.
It does.
Would not be our normal.
No.
Right, it's definitely not...
It's very similar to the Kohl's.
You can see what shows up on our packet, it's much...
Very similar to the Kohl's.
Yeah, it's a little lighter on the, on the iPad.
We do have a material board that we can bring in here and kind of give you an accurate visual of the materials.
Much less dark.
Yeah.
Yes.
It looks gray.
Well, I think it's more of, I don't want to prove that dark, but it is different than our color scheme.
Right.
And I think it's a valid question, what color is it?
Right. And we'll give you an accurate representation of that pretty soon here.
That looks more...
Yep.
And then I was curious, the size of, you know, we were talking about the roll-off structures. Is there enough room in, in the dumpster structure for a garbage, for recycling, for organics, if they do that as well? So they don't look that big?
Yes, I mean, when, when they size them, they take into account everything that they're gonna fit in there, so...
I know the state is pushing for organics in time with food stuff too, so I want to make sure we have enough room, so, okay.
Right. So this is the lighter Chaska brick color. I'm just gonna show it for you guys. And then the two colors on here are the colors that you see in the Hazelton Plaza development already. And then, you know, a couple of the buildings will be incorporating the Eves, which is the Chipotle and Starbucks, and then some of this Natchea material on the paneling. But all three buildings will be incorporating these three brick colors right here.
All right, that helps.
Yep.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
I'll move approval of...
Let's, yeah, let's start with...
Ordinance number 946.
Okay. That's the zoning ordinance. So I have a motion by Councilmember Rowe?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Geisler approving ordinance 946, approving zoning ordinance amendment to PCD-15. Nope. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. On the resolution, 2018-27.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to adopt resolution 2018-27.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Bowe?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Geisler, again, adopting 2018-27, approving preliminary site and building plan and preliminary plat for Aldi's Chipotle and Starbucks. Discussion.
Exciting, see it moving forward.
Yep, exactly, so, all right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries, moves us on to item number nine. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Adopt resolution 2018-27, approving the conceptual, concept plan amendment, preliminary plat for medical office building and daycare in Chaska Creek Center.
Mayor, Councilmember, the item in front of you tonight is an extension of the Chaska Creek Center. If you've been out there recently, you'll see that the office building that's out there now just got its signage on there, so it's really certainly come together. It looks really nice. So this would be the site just to the west of that existing building in the next phase of moving forward this development. So this is coming from the Planning Commission, is recommended for approval for the concept plan, and I'll turn it over to Liz to present.
Matt, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So as he said, we're looking at a, at a preliminary plat and a concept plan amendment tonight, specifically for a second office building and daycare use in the Chaska Creek Center. So to give you an understanding of exactly where this site falls, on that site, that's in the southwest quadrant of Angler Boulevard and Highway 212, I've kind of delineated it out in blue on this aerial. So again, tonight, we're specifically looking at an amendment to the concept plan that was approved in 2014, and basically that's due to the fact that we're proposing an additional use than what was previously approved out there, which is for the daycare site. So we're looking at the daycare use as well as the office building use as a part of this request. And then the preliminary plat would be to plat that parcel into two lots for both those So here's an exhibit of their overall site plan with the site area or subject site area dashed out, and then more of a zoomed-in perspective here. So as you can see, in the zoomed-out perspective, we've got the current medical office building that's being constructed now, just to the east of the subject site, and then Hy-Vee even more easterly of that. So these are basically the two sites that have already been approved out there for finals, so we're just kind of looking at the, the next in line here, which is these two sites.
So if I, if I understand it right, that road was, initially had been planned to go out?
Correct.
With a right in and right out?
Yep.
And so that's got nicks?
Yep.
And now that's what's opened these two lots up?
Right.
Or were they always there?
It was always one site for another office building, so with this street being stubbed off into a cul-de-sac, it is freeing up a little bit more space for another building site.
Okay.
So that's why we're doing an amendment.
And I know that we're talking a daycare and even a name behind it is, are they proposing that, or is that after we get this approved that it would move forward?
So we're only looking at an amendment and pre-plat tonight, so we are not approving any site plan tonight. They have to come back at a later time for their preliminary.
But I mean, with the name attached to that daycare, the plan is to build a daycare there?
Yes, yes, they do have someone already in line for that daycare center, specifically for Ladybug Daycare, which is located in Chaska, so they would be moving to this bigger site for them.
Okay.
So here's a more zoomed-in perspective of both those lots, both those uses. The daycare site is more on the westerly side of this, it'll be an acre and a half. I think the things that they need to keep in mind as they come back for site plan approvals for these, both these lots, is the view sheds from County Road 10 to keep in mind, since it is heavily exposed, they should really think about articulation and how people view into the site, specifically for the daycare site because they will plan to have play areas on the outside, so they'll need to show consistent treatment of those play areas that we've done with other daycare sites that are very highly exposed. So doing a wrought iron and brick pillar fence design around these play areas would be required as they move forward. For the medical office building site, that one's more in the center, so kind of sandwiched in between the daycare building and the other current office building. The intent of this one is really to kind of match or be similar to the office building that's going up right now, so the layout and the overall design is gonna be pretty much the same as what you see today on the other site.
Is there any concern about that play area so close to County Road 10 and by an intersection, about accidents and a car coming in there?
I'm sure that's something that the daycare definitely looks at, given its high exposure there, but it's definitely something that's not uncommon either for daycare sites. We have one...
Okay, because wouldn't the road be elevated there?
The one right at 41 and Pioneer, it's right up against the, or right up against 41.
And just down the road at 10 and 41.
I just worry this one's a little faster.
By Holiday, yeah, very true.
Because it just seems like we're elevated there, and, but if they're not concerned...
The brick pillars will do a good job too.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be 41.
Those are pretty significant elements that will be added into that, yeah.
Okay.
So I think the only other thing that they also need to kind of keep in mind is pedestrian connections into the site. They are showing sidewalks on both sides of the Street of Chaska, Creequeway, and the bulb of the cul-de-sac, but showing how this area can connect into the site and provide pedestrian access to both sites in this overall area.
Just as a note on that, one of the things that we've seen in our older industrial parks and up in the north end of town is not having sidewalks in there and what, how much demand there is from the businesses up there. This is gonna be obviously a heavy job center, and a place for people to walk during lunchtime and things like that is becoming a lot more important.
Times have changed.
Yes, yeah.
Right.
Exactly. So where the dotted line is there, sorry to keep asking questions, but that looks like parking, is that for the other lot there, or is that just from the old?
Um, I'm sorry...
Where the dash line to my left?
That's the parking for the industrial building which lies to the southwest of there.
Okay.
Yep, so they're just kind of showing a conceptual view right now of that site. So that, that site obviously has to come in for their own site plan approval in terms of how that's gonna lay out.
If I'm not mistaken, it's just after that, it's 50 miles, 55 along there. It'd be nice if the county would move that to make it 40 as soon as you get off 212, but it's not like that now. If they could lower the speed zone like it's gonna matter, but people are still gonna drive 55, but right now it changes past that.
Mm-hmm.
But with more traffic and all of that, we could talk to the county and see if they could, while this is being done, readdress that speed limit.
Yep, and we can definitely share the, the plans with them on that. So another thing that was looked at as a part of this request tonight, since there was a change from a through street into a cul-de-sac, we did have the applicant put together a traffic analysis for that to show how it would change the format out there, so they did put that together, and the conclusion of that report did indicate that the change will work into being a cul-de-sac.
So that way, Chaska Creek Boulevard will, will access that. So that way Cheska Creek Boulevard will access that a stoplight, which makes sense anyway.
Mm-hmm, right. So your main movement into this site is going to be from Cheska Boulevard, Cheska Creek Boulevard. Just a couple pictures of the daycare site and then the office building in terms of the anticipated look. The office building, again, is going to look much like the one that's being constructed today. And then the daycare will kind of follow that same prototype that they've done in other communities like Shakopee and Waconia. So we'll obviously work with the applicant when they come through for site plan approvals to really articulate these elevations and buildings. So the specific things that they need to work on as they come back for preliminary and final site plans, they will still need to get rezoning as well. But the things to keep in mind are the pedestrian connections and gathering spaces that they need to provide for these sites, the drop-off pickup function at the daycare, since that's a very typical operation associated with a daycare, is we want to understand how that operates with that one specifically. And looking at enhanced view sheds into the site for the building and overall site for both of those sites. And then the design of the building should show general consistency between each other as well as tying into Cheska. So in terms of what they've proposed tonight, they are making good strides to get these other pieces wrapped up. And they do have two other steps through us at least for each of those uses, for us to nail down those details that still need to be worked out. So with that, we are asking you to make a motion to adopt resolution number two thousand eighteen dash twenty-eight, which is approving the concept plan amendment and preliminary plat, subject to the conditions that are listed within that. I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, Dave is here as well on behalf of the applicant.
Do you know if these will be owner-occupied or leased, or?
I believe the office building is going to be leased, just like the other one. And then for the daycare site, is that going to be owner-occupied or owner-occupied?
Okay, thank you.
The medical building at this point is not, there's not any plans of building currently, correct?
Not right now. I think they're working on it.
Okay.
So like all the sidewalks, some of these folks may just even walk over to Hy-Vee over their lunch or whatever the case may be.
Yep.
Okay.
Very good.
I'll move approval to adopt resolution number two zero one eight dash two eight.
Motion by council member Rowe.
Second that.
Second by council member Bowe to, again, adopting twenty eighteen dash twenty-eight, approving concept plan amendment and preliminary plot for medical office and a daycare in Cheska Creek. So, discussion.
Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign? Motion carries. Thank you.
Those two went through easy. This next one's going to be a little bit harder, I think.
Item number ten, adopting resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-nine, approving final plot for Bavaria Vista, John Merrington, Mary Stickleton.
Mayor, council member, you're remember back, the August of two thousand seventeen, this past August, the city council did have a meeting to consider the preliminary plat and rezoning for the Bavaria Vista subdivision. That was, the zoning was approved for it at that time, and the only remaining item was to consider the final plat for this. At that same meeting, there was a request made by their neighbor, Tim McGlinnan, to look at the potential of reducing some of the standards within the PRD seventy, which was established at that August two thousand seventeen meeting to consider lesser standards to potentially make other lots subdivisible at the time. Liz is here to talk about the planning commission action that was recommended. And you will see that they are recommending moving forward with approval of this.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Like Matt said, we're looking at a final plat approval and request tonight specifically for Bavaria Vista, located at thirty-one ninety High Point Drive. So the site is located just on Lake Bavaria and to the west of Bavaria Road. It's on a five-acre parcel right off of a private drive known as High Point Drive. So Matt kind of went into the background, but just to reiterate, in November of two thousand sixteen, that's when the concept plan and variance was approved for this project. And at that time, the concept plan was approved, but the variance was denied, which was specifically to lower the minimum lot size, or asking for a variance from the minimum lot size requirement there. So at that time, the city council, you guys, asked staff to work with the applicant and to figure out a workable plan. So that's when we brought it back in August of two thousand seventeen for a preliminary plat and rezoning for the lot and the two lots on the south and north of it. So this is when the rezoning from the PRD RLS zoning district to the PRD seventy district was approved. And also at that time, that's when their neighbor to the north, Tim McGlinnan, did ask for a request to minimize some of the standards even further. And this was all based on kind of his desire to subdivide his lot. He specifically asked for it to be minimized down to a one-acre minimum lot size, fifty feet of street frontage, and a hundred and twenty-five feet of lake frontage. So as a part of this request tonight, we are looking at two different things. We're looking at the final plat for the Stapletons, but we're also revisiting the analysis done by staff as advised by you guys tonight. So that exhibit was provided in your packet tonight in terms of Tim McGlinnan's request. So again, the first part is we're looking at that final plat request for Bavaria Vista. And this is looking at the Stapletons lot and plating it from one lot into three lots. So overall, in terms of what they're proposing there, it does meet the zoning out there. And there's no issues on staff end, so there's no reason for us to say that this request should be denied. Specifically, I want to kind of talk about the current zoning district that's out there. And like Matt said, the Stapleton lot, the McGlinnan lot, and the Unger lot were all rezoned during that August two thousand seventeen meeting. So the PRD seventy regulations are the current zoning for both, for all three of those lots out there. So when we went through the rezoning, it basically was the same standards that were applied in the PRD RLS zoning district, which was the previous zoning district before it got rezoned, with the exception of the minimum lot size requirement. That was the only piece that got changed as a part of this rezoning. So the minimum lot size was reduced down to one point two five acres. And that was basically done to bring those three lots into conformance with the minimum lot size standard. As you can see on this slide, the Unger lot is one point two six acres. They are the smallest lot out there. So that value was basically derived off of that smallest lot value. So with that, it does bring all three of those lots into conformance for the minimum lot size requirement. In terms of the setbacks, the lot widths, the lake frontage requirements, those all stayed the same that were originally applied in the PRD RLS zoning district. So with that in mind, we did, with the rezoning that occurred out there for all three of those lots, it did not create any additional restrictions on these lots. And just to mention, we don't consider what was done out there, a notion of spot zoning. It's been brought up that that action out there was considered spot zoning, but just to clarify, the way spot zoning is defined, the action that was done out there is not in line with that, because it does not conflict with our comm plan or current zoning requirements. So the second part of this request tonight is the request made by Tim McGlinnan during the preliminary plat stage of this. And that was done at the August twenty-first, two thousand seventeen city council meeting. So again, his request was to reduce the minimum lot size requirement down to one acre, the minimum street frontage requirement down to fifty feet, and the minimum street, or the minimum lake frontage down to one hundred and twenty-five feet. So we did take a look into that a little bit more in terms of how these standards would apply to other lots within the general area as advised by you guys. So we did put an exhibit together tonight to kind of show you what lots in the general vicinity would be affected by these new standards. So that's the one with the stars on it. So with the new standards in place, there's fourteen properties that would be able to fall within that new set of standards, which would make them eligible to subdivide out there. And it should also be noted that with the regulations that Tim McGlinnan did put forth, his lot does not meet those aforementioned standards if he were to subdivide.
The PRD seventy or?
Well, his regulation, or the requested standards. So he wouldn't be able to subdivide under the PRD seventy, but he also wouldn't be able to subdivide under the regulations that he requested. So the three that are listed just above that.
I'm just, hold on a second. I went cross-eyed there for a second. So he asked for specific changes?
Right.
That it wouldn't impact his lot?
Would not allow him to subdivide even with those?
So why did he ask for them, I guess is the question.
I think based on the, under the understanding that he would be able to subdivide. But as we looked at this, he wouldn't be able to subdivide under those minimum requirements.
Under the current minimum requirements.
Under the requested ones. Oh, wow.
Wow.
So fourteen neighboring properties could, but he could not?
Right.
But not all of the neighboring properties could, as you can see in the map.
Absolutely.
So kind of based on our analysis-
Now, I'll clarify, the stars though represent if it was the proposed, not the PRD seventy.
Right.
The PRD seventy only-
Proposed to go down to one acre lots.
Yes.
Right.
That's what changed.
Yep.
Right.
It hasn't changed, it's just we're-
Saying if you did change it, these are the ones-
If you did request us to make that change, that would be that impact.
Residents coming and wanting to subdivide.
So it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't impact Cheval. It doesn't look like, if I'm looking at the map right.
No.
It's just the larger properties.
Right.
Some of the larger properties, and it would leave some of the larger properties, which we think is problematic if that were to move forward.
Oh, because then you, I mean, it sort of becomes a slippery slope where, well, if one's really close, we'll make it just a little bit less.
Yeah.
You know, it's-
Right. And pretty soon we wind up with small lots like we have on the southwest side of the lake. Because once you start down that path, it's hard to pull it back.
I think the thing that was sort of slick about the rezoning that was done back in August is it was based on a lot that already existed. So with Unger's lot, it was at one point two six acres. So actually, without the rezoning, he would be out of compliance with zoning. So by doing that, it set the lot standards based on a lot that already existed and put them all in conforming standards.
So most of them, though, if we can go back to that, aren't even on the lake?
Some of them, correct.
Right.
Yeah. A good portion.
Because I think, you know, my thought on this was, you know, could we open up, you know, more potential home sites, you know, on the lake? Because as someone that, you know, has looked at properties recently, you can't, if you want to live on a lake, you can't live in Cheska. It's just, it's just not going to happen. You're going to have to go to Chanassan or Minnetoka or somewhere else. And so it's very exclusive, you know, to live on, live on a lake here in Cheska. So that, that was one of my, you know, thing, because the one side's the golf course, you know, there's not a lot of development on that. You've got Stabner property, you know what I mean, that can't be developed up there. So that was my thinking was, you know, is it possible to open up, you know, four, or five, six more home sites that people can build on the lake?
So another piece of this that we're wanting to touch on tonight is kind of giving you more history as to kind of the situation out there. So dating it back to two thousand fourteen with this one, so this is coming back to McGlinnan's lot. They did go through, they had an existing home, but they demolished and reconstructed it in two thousand fourteen. So at that time, they were also looking at adding a new detached garage as part of that project plan. And at that time, the location of where they wanted to put that garage was only one foot away from the side yard lot line. So when we were looking at that, they did give us indication that a portion of the Stapletons' property would be absorbed into their property at a later date, which would essentially put them in compliance with that side yard setback for the detached garage. So with that in mind, we were amenable to approving a building permit request based on the fact that they will be obtaining some of the Stapletons' property, with the notion that the Stapletons would sign off on their plans and agree with the fact that they are in the future going to transfer some of their property. So that signature was received by the Stapletons. But during that time, a building permit was never pulled for the detached garage. So we got the signature, but the building permit was never pursued. And in between that time, a foundation was poured with no building permit.
For the new garage?
Right.
The funding was poured.
Right. So that foundation is out there today. And just to give you a visual of kind of what I explained in that previous slide, as you're seeing, kind of the proposed location of that detached garage, only a foot off of the side yard lot line. And then in green is kind of the area that was potentially going to be acquired from the Stapleton lot to basically put that garage in compliance with that side yard setback. So if we fast forward to today, the Mr. McGlinnan did come in to apply for a building permit for that detached garage, and was proposing the same location that he proposed in two thousand fourteen. But at this time, the Stapletons no longer wanted to transfer part of their property over to the McGlinnans. So when we reviewed the building permit application, we did deny it because, first of all, it didn't meet the side yard setback required out there. And we no longer had that indication that they were acquiring land from the Stapletons. So with that, we did try to work with the applicant on other alternatives for them to meet that setback. And to give you an update of where we're at now, just an hour before this meeting, they have been able to come to an agreement on a portion of the Stapletons' land to be absorbed into their lot. So it does sound like an agreement has been made between both parties. So the issue of the detached garage not meeting the side yard setback is basically figured out. But we just kind of wanted to set the stage for that in terms of the history of both these lots, in particular, because they do in some part play together in terms of how we look at it tonight. So wanted to give you that history as we move forward with this request. So in terms of the final plat, we are only asking you to make a motion to adopt resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-nine, which is approving the final plat for Bavaria Vista, based on the conditions that are listed within that. that are listed within that, with an added condition to include, and I do have a, an exhibit to share with you, based on what was received from both parties on the area that's going to be acquired.
Thank you. I was going to ask about that.
Is this final? Well, we just got this an hour before the meeting tonight, so.
Is this, this area here, this Outlet A, there's nothing going to be developed on this piece of property, correct?
No. I mean, the way they.
So, so wouldn't the easier thing to be to grant the variance on the setback? I mean, if there's not going to be any property, anything built on that piece of land?
Well, they would have to, I mean.
Then they have to look at, you know, people swapping land and doing all that crap?
They don't want to, they may want to, yeah.
And it just seems asinine to me that we would make the landowners go through that if, if they're not going to build on that piece of property. You might as well grant the setback variance and be done with it.
But in the same sense, if you would have got a building permit, you'd have found out you couldn't build there.
I had a building room permit. Can I talk about this? Because I'm getting slammed. And I have the building for a great year. The inspector inspected it. I have building permits. Can't hear you.
Could you come up to the front, please? Thank you.
I understand this. John, I just sent them a note to say, this is what we're talking about. Just said what to do. So it's not final. Yes, no, totally get it. I don't build a house, million dollar home, and not pull a building permit. I don't know why she's saying that. Building permit issued April 11th, 2010 to my builder. Inspection record includes detached garage slab on grade. Okay to pour, provide, okay to pour slab. This is for the location of the setback, okay. Okay, when we, when we didn't then complete it, the slab is all there, I spent $15,000, and we had to wait. So then he said, your inspector says, okay, building permit will be required, another one when it's to be constructed. Because detached garage was not built at that time. They okayed, sealed our main house. We did this to make our house look really, really nice. Built a big house, two car garage. We're going to put a detached garage separate so it looks nicer. It's not all garage. We purposely did this. We put it over towards John's and Mary's land. We got their okay. They signed it. That's what the city required. I've got a ton of emails about this. Once we got, a year later, just about a year ago, when all this came to light, that you guys were rezoning me without telling me, then I realized what's going on. And when, when it didn't look like we could straighten the line, I have a slab there. I have a building permit. I have an email to planning department saying, I need an assurance that I can finish the construction of my garage. It's all in the email, all in a summary I just gave to Liz, two and a half, three weeks ago, after the building permit was denied. I'm just trying to finish my garage. And there are, there's so many issues with this whole thing and my requests for the different numbers on the zoning, but there's far too many details to discuss it tonight. I brought that up last August with the understanding at some point, we would have some discussions about it and have my experts talk with the city and go over all the details of the reasons why. I have been in the dark, for six months, I've been asking to see, do you have that document put together? What is your stance on it? How are you looking at it? Just three weeks ago, when all this is coming to light with the building permit being denied, I asked Liz, do you have that together? Have you and Kevin written something up that I can look at? No, I haven't even started on it. I find out last Wednesday, before the planning commission, when I meet with the planning department and Matt, that's when I say, hey, when is that going to happen? Are we going to talk about it next month? Oh, no, I'm going to talk about it tonight. So I'm totally unprepared and totally behind the eight ball in any of this discussion. So I'm not an idiot, just threw out some numbers, asking for that. There was some reasons why, but you can't elaborate it all in just a planning, planning commission meeting or a council meeting. So I submitted a letter this evening, or earlier today, and I have it tonight, just I'm objecting to any, you know, the resolution of rezoning on my land. I have no problem with the zoning that you're putting on John and Mary's. But I haven't gotten timely notice, and I'm totally unprepared, and have not been able to look at or review it with my experts or even talk to staff about it.
I think there's some misunderstanding about, about what's actually occurred out here. The rezoning actually occurred last August, and that was something that we did provide notice to indicate that the rezoning was going to occur. I know at that time, you brought up some concerns that you wanted to make the lot smaller, but the rezoning actually occurred at that time. There was a request to take a look at, look at the requests that Mr. McGlinnan had made to look at, would it make sense to amend the zoning ordinance in the future? That's not the action that we're taking tonight. The action that we're taking tonight is simply to approve the final plat for, for the Stapletons. If there was a desire to, we're bringing for this information to talk about if there was a desire to look at, should we change those? Then we'd have to go through a process to do that, and he'd receive notice again if we wanted to do that. But the rezoning is not tonight. The rezoning was last August.
Can you clarify this building permit? I mean, was the original building permit closed out? Is that?
Yeah, so basic, well, Kevin, I don't know if you, you can probably explain that.
Well, I believe from what I was told that the permit wasn't issued for the garage just for the house, and that's what I have to go on. And so I don't have it in front of me, but Matt's right. The zoning took place, the applicant's attorney was here and talked on his behalf during the rezoning process. And so we did provide notice, and which you received, and which you advised your attorney to come and represent you at it. And so that did conclude. The second part was to look at this other piece, which, as we analyzed it, trying to figure out what you would and what you wouldn't own in the end was the complicating factor, because trying to figure out how much, would you get any of the Stapleton's land? Would you get some? Would you get none? Try to find some conclusion to that did take a long time, but that was part of the discussion, not between us, between the two parties. And that finally came to closure, and we were able to provide the final analysis on that area. But Matt's right, that the rezoning did take place, you know, the proper notices were followed, and the only piece that's out there besides this final plat is an analysis or discussion, is there any further action that could or should take place in relationship to that PRD 70? And.
I think there's really sort of two questions here tonight. Well, there's, there's three. One is just getting the Stapletons through and getting their final plat completed, which is pretty straightforward. The second question is looking at, should we do, you know, based on the information that we provided, you know, showing, you know, basically, if we went down to those standards that had been requested before, should we consider changing PRD 70 again to make the lot sizes smaller? So I think that's one of the things that we, we should talk about and get some guidance on, about whether that's something we want to pursue or that's something that we don't think we should pursue. The third item with the garage is, you know, from the staff perspective, what we've looked at is, we agree that the garage should be built on this slab that's there. I think it's unfortunate that it's there and it didn't occur at the time, but the real question is, how do we make sure that what's built there is in compliance? Because the thing we don't want to have is something that's built out of compliance, because that's going to be out of compliance in the future. And so there's two ways that that can be accomplished. The way that we pursue it is just doing a land swap so you can meet the, so you can meet the actual setbacks. Second way is to actually go through a variance process, which the variance process takes some time. We felt that this would be the quicker way to get that done, because if we went through and got this done, got them approved, and they went through this swap, they could meet the setback, and we wouldn't have to go through that whole variance process. So that was sort of the reasoning for, you know, suggesting moving forward this way, because we felt that that would be the quickest.
Is the setback five feet?
Fifteen.
So they, so there's 11 or 14.
There's 14 feet that we have to make up here. So I mean, we don't want to see something built out of compliance, because if something's built out of compliance, it's a non-compliance going into the future, which isn't good for the McGlinnans either. So that's why we are trying to come up with some kind of solution that could, as quickly as possible, come to some kind of resolution on that property line.
And if they could come to some agreement on what could happen with that wedge, you know, we could handle it administratively, whether it was making it into an outlot or whatever, that wouldn't slow them down and would allow Mr. McGlinnan to move forward as well. And I think that's what we were trying to express was our willingness to make sure that if they came to agreement on how to get that and how to get Mr. McGlinnan's garage to meet the correct setback, that we were, we would be amenable to tweaking the final plat, however it needed to get tweaked, to make sure that that happened and that they could move forward in a timely fashion as well.
So if the Stapletons were to get the McGlinnans additional property to bring the garage into compliance, is it going to change their ability to light the lots to the size required?
Not based on the current zoning. That was a big, they had plenty of frontage on that particular lot, and so that lot would stay in conformance with the requirements of the PRD 70. And so.
I think the other thing is to look back in history when, when the, when the original discussion on the garage occurred, this entire triangle was in play, and that whole triangle was going to change hands. In the meantime, the Stapletons decided that they didn't want to do this. What this does is it doesn't give away the entire triangle, because they didn't want to, and they prefer that they actually see these lot lines straightened out, because they're sort of odd shaped out there because of, there was a road that, that went through. And so it was a way to get the property that was necessary to meet those setbacks, but also straighten out the property lines too, so that they made a little bit more sense.
So I have two questions. I mean, I, I would like to get my hands wrapped around how there can be such a disconnect between what he believes, you know, happened with the original permitting and inspection and the documentation that you have. Because if, I would like to see it, you know, because I, I would, I would really like to have a better understanding of, you know, what happened there.
Proposed plans for a new single-family home and a detached garage are approved for construction. Here's inspection record, includes detached garage slab on grade. Here's the pour inspection. I don't know.
The building, the doing, moving forward with this was predicated on them getting the property, and that never happened.
In the permitting process, it says that?
No, 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 no. It's not true.
That's not correct.
Building the garage was predicated on actually having the additional property.
Was your approval just, come on, yeah, come on up.
Yeah, but you got to talk.
When Tim was building the garage, he asked me if I would agree to it being close to the lot line, and that we did agree to. But that's the end of what was the agreement.
Well, but it took it out of compliance in order to meet our, that's, I agree, that's not, that's not your deal, but the, but the agreement that we had talked about is that it had to be able to meet the setbacks. And so that's where the discussion came up.
At some point in the future, that was the email. The permit says nothing about that. I understand at the time, that was our goal and our hope, thought it would happen. That it, it didn't work out the way, had I just built it that, that year, this would be a moot point, it would be there.
So that's my, that's my.
See, I think, I think where the, I think where the confusion is occurring here is it was always thought that this had just occurred, or that this would just occur as the actual property transfer. And we didn't find out till much later that it hadn't occurred. And so I think there was.
But we usually don't make decisions based upon.
What might.
What might happen. I, I don't, of all my years sitting up here, I can't think of a time we've sat up here and said, well, based upon this piece of land and this, what this was discussed, we're going to go ahead and give you a permit. I, I know how difficult our permitting process is. And I can't, these are the things that get me very frustrated is, is what, things like this just really frustrate me. And, you know, and, and so another question I have, and I've been up here a long time, maybe I don't understand the process, but, so every variance that we've granted can, can cause problems because of non-compliance?
No, no, no.
Let's take a variance.
No, the variance would be to actually put it in compliance.
Right.
We are trying to, what we are trying to avoid is going through the variance process to put it in compliance.
But we can't say, we can't create a variance to say we're going to allow it with a five-foot setback? Why can't we do that?
Well, I think that's what the variance would be. It would make it legally, yeah.
Right. What I was getting confused was, you were saying that we, we couldn't do that because it wouldn't have the compliance of, for the future.
No, no, no. What happens is by giving the variance, let's say that we kept the property line exactly where it is, by giving the variance, it'd say that you don't have to meet this setback anymore. The setback is what, what the variance says it is then.
Okay. So it seems to me, at least in my opinion, that would be the, the easiest thing to do.
Grant the variance.
For the, it's just grant the variance.
But we have to go through that process to do it. That's what we were trying to avoid, is going through that process. We thought we could take care of everything during this meeting.
Well, I'm going to throw my nickel in here. There seems to be a big disconnect. It needs to go back to staff. I don't think we sit here and make a decision yet. There's obviously, there has to be some talking. There's a last minute thing about maybe doing a land swap. I think all these things need to get worked out before we stop here and say, let's give them a variance.
What I would suggest is, I don't think we should hold up the, I don't think we should hold up the Stapletons. Theirs is pretty.
But that's really what this is. All the rest of this is.
No, theirs is just for the replating.
Right. That's what I mean. But that's what our agenda is.
But the other items, what we could do is, I mean, I hear what you guys are saying is, is come up with the easiest way to make sure that the, that the garage goes into compliance. So what we can do is we can have that discussion. I think the only other thing that we need to, to get some guidance on though is, do we want to be considering changing the zoning amendment? Because, or zoning ordinance? Because that's completely separate than the garage.
Yeah, but is that, is that, does that need to be part of item nine or whatever we're on?
The agenda item is just the Stapletons.
It's just the Stapleton property, right?
Yeah, no, not taking action tonight, but really saying, is that something that you want us to explore further? It's more direction.
I, I mean, if you're asking me, or do we have to take a vote of it? I, I don't think we should, because we're going to end up with this 14 more times. And then if I'm at, if I'm at, maybe I'm at .99 acres, can I? And it, it just, I worried about this when we did it before, when we were talking about it. What, how does this snowball happen? And if we keep going down, I can't, I understand what you're saying, Councilman Roel, but I'm not convinced that that's the way to do it. Because we could just open up another hole for future councils, we could have, just really handcuff them on things like this. We did it before, why can't you do it now? So I'm, I'm, if you're asking me the question about whether or not we should look at the rezoning, I, I think we leave it where it's, where it's at now. I think we came up with a fair assessment on how it was done, and I'm, I'm fine with that.
I guess I would like to ask that that discussion come at a later meeting, because I am not prepared to even give any input on this. And I was only told we were going to be discussing this on Wednesday, so.
Well, there's just too many. We're not talking rezoning. This is the plot for the Stapletons. That's it.
Yeah, I didn't even come up here expecting any of this to come up, nor my garage or any of this, but I'm just jumping in now. We just kind of came to a little bit of agreement today of something that would work. I mean, we've only had since like last few days ago, end of last week, to kind of come up with something.
But this has obviously been going on for a while. It's not just happened. Because it's been a while.
The garage, I only asked for a permit to finish the construction just a few weeks ago.
Well, I don't think, I mean, I haven't heard anything about any of the additional rezoning until tonight. I mean, since we brought it up, because I think I was one of the people that wanted to direct staff to take a look at.
Yep.
So, I mean, so I'm with you. I, I mean, this is the first that I've heard about it and, you know, been presented with it, so.
Well, and again, we weren't bringing back anything to talk about, to actually do rezoning tonight. It was really just answering the question.
Yeah.
If it makes it easier, what we could do is we could just. Discussion. If it makes it easier, what we could do is we could just, we could just deal with the Stapletons. We could go back. We hear the direction that you're talking about with the garage. Just come up with the easiest method to deal with bringing that into compliance. I do think it's important that we bring it into compliance so that he's able to, you know, it's in compliance in the future.
I always hate when we, and I'm not saying this will happen, but I hate getting attorneys involved. I hate having to move land around. Next thing you know, you're in for five, you're in for ten. And, and I just think that's ridiculous for us to ask of our residents. It's just my own personal.
Right now, I don't think that's the case. I think they're working on an agreement between themselves. I mean, and I don't know any of that, but that's what I'm hearing.
We can come up with whatever is the easiest method for them to do that. And then what we can do at the, at the same time is bring back a discussion on the concept of looking at PRD seventy in a bigger picture.
Yep.
And then it gives Mr. McLennan an opportunity to respond to it. But again, that, that wasn't the action that was being sought tonight. It was.
And, and could we, could we also get a write-up? Because I would like to understand how his understanding of the original permitting and, and what was said earlier. Because it, I can understand why you're upset.
How could it be approved with such a small setback?
I would just like to have an understanding. What did we do?
Yeah, but the building permit was for years ago. It's been closed out.
We'll, we'll provide, we'll, we'll give you a summary.
My question is even then, was it approved at five feet from a line?
Yes. It sounds like it was.
You gotta come to the microphone, old Mary. Tell them to sit down.
No, John and Tim are working on this.
Yep.
It's just, we're not ready tonight to have this final acceptance, okay? But they have worked. We want to be neighbors. We've been there forty-eight years with them. So we will work it out and I thank everybody. It's, you know, I, I don't do any of this stuff, so it's beyond me. But thank you. I don't want you to think that we're Hatfield's and McCoy's. We will work it out.
We need a good feud out there.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I, you know, I can either give you this now, if you want to make copies and I have some other emails. Liz should have the summary of what I sent.
Yeah. I just want to get to the, I would like to get to the bottom of hearing earlier that there was no permit, that you just poured a slab out there, you know? Because if you did that, I'd say pretty much got to take that thing out. But then when, when you're, you know, giving us a separate side of the story and you've got documentation, I go, okay, you know, what, what happened here? How are we so diametrically opposed in what, what we believe to have happened? So, so if we could get some more background on that, that'd be great.
Very good. Any else?
Thank you. Then basically, we're back to basically approving a final plat for Bavaria Vista, the Stapletons. Twenty eighteen, twenty-nine. Rest was information at this point.
Yep.
Correct.
And you guys will work on figuring the rest out.
Yep.
We good up here?
Yes.
Jay? Yeah, we're good?
Mr. Mayor, then I would say I would make a motion to adopt a resolution toward two thousand eighteen-two-nine to approve this final plat for Bavaria Vista, Stapleton three lot.
So motion by Councilmember both.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Geester adopting.
Can I make?
Oh.
Oh.
I know you ended, you closed.
I, I.
So you, we have a motion and a second and we can go.
We can do that and open up a comment.
We can go into discussion here.
Yep.
And that's where we were kind of going, because that we have.
Oh, that's all right.
Sending and then, then Tim jumped outside.
Oh, that's all right.
I gotta finish our, oh, hang on one second. So I have a motion and a second. And we will now go into discussion and yes, you may come on up.
Thank you.
Sorry. I didn't know that you had any interest in speaking. Not sure who you are, so.
I'm Anne Jones and I live at thirty-two-ten High Point. Thanks for having me. I love my neighbors and so this is not a case of like us versus them. I want to be a good steward of the things that I've been given and the life that I'm called to live. So I'm here tonight to share with you that what you're proposing greatly affects my family, my home, what I've been called to do. What you're proposing will add two more lots past my home. So I'm going to have almost double the traffic that I currently have. That doesn't include the construction and all this other stuff that will affect my, my home and my family. The road that will access these additional lots is poorly maintained gravel in rough shape, rutted out, sometimes not very passable road. Currently, the driveway already has issues, which I just said. And that, for instance, garbage trucks go down past my road to the neighbors to empty their garbage and then turn around in my driveway so they can then exit the driveway out to the main road.
Do you guys have, I'm sorry, do you have a map of the thing handy so we know what she's talking about? We can put one out. I'm Tony. I'm Anne's husband. Just point to the spots on there so we can see where we're at and then where the dead end is.
Okay, so we're right here. Then we have the three sites past us. So everyone goes this way. They do what they need to do and then they can't turn around. There's nowhere for them to go. It's barely turn-aroundable in a van. And then they back out and use my driveway to back into and then proceed back down High Point the way a normal car would, or a truck. We bought this property and home to raise our family and have an ability to provide foster care, to open up our home to people in need. The big, one of the big selling features was the property, the size of the land, that we would have room for, for people to be outside, enjoy nature, do things in the woods, and that the neighborhood was fully developed, that we weren't expecting people to come in and build homes and have to live through that. I do understand there are no guarantees in life as we just went through the two-year tear-down and rebuild of the McLennan home, which is right next to our home. I think I just wanted to share a few of, of how this affects us. I know the, you just talked about rezoning. It's kind of, this is not my, my bag. So I'm really sorry if I'm not understanding everything. But we bend to two of these. They were turned down, the variances were turned down. It seemed like it was a dead end. So now here we are, all of a sudden, just got notice of the planning meeting last week. Have had no other communication from the city of Cheska about what is going on. So we were unable to go last week, but then got all the stuff online. I think Liz helped us figure all that out and was like, oh, what is going on? So it seems a little sneaky, like turn the variances down. And now here we are, a year later, a year and a half later, and now everything's great. And we're going to take one plat of land and make it into three. Also through this, learning that the association that we're in is a mess. That the association is not aware about kind of what is going on and they're interested in helping us to resolve this. Our road, I think that as mom and as a person that sees the road every day and all the traffic, that it's hard to be outside because this road is a problem. And we maintain it. The city of Chaska doesn't, but that's a whole nother mess. And that the road cannot handle or sustain the additional three homes that you're, they're proposing to build on this site the way it is. I mean, it's, it's unsafe. It's not passable. It's dusty. So that's. I, I don't understand the rezoning that's maybe been done, not done. But you're looking at a final plat from my limited understanding is that once the plat is done, then they're going to go get building permits. Is that?
And I don't recall, you know, we have a lot of meetings. Were you guys here last August when this?
We weren't at that one. In, in the planning meeting, I was here before that. And I stressed that I was a concerned citizen. I, I don't know why. Nobody talked to me. My neighbors didn't talk to me. The city didn't reach out. The, the staff hadn't reached out to me. And they asked her, well, what are you going to do about that? And she said, well, we will notify them if there's further meetings and all this information's available online. But I didn't know that they were having a city council. They could have told me that day there's a city council meeting to, because they, they turned, they turned everything down on the meeting I was at. I didn't know that they were going to, they turned down the variance and then all of a sudden the rezoning so they can get the variances through. It makes no sense.
And I'm just asking, were you notified last August of the zoning change?
I believe we sent out notice to the neighbors at that point. So our, our procedure for going through rezoning is when we go through the rezoning, we do the preliminary plat at that time. We notify everybody that's within a certain radius of that. And then we have that public hearing to rezone. So back in last August, the Stapletons had the right after that point to be able to, to subdivide their plat. And so we were, when we send out notice, we send it out on rezonings, which happened last August. We typically do not send out notice on the final plat because typically it's more of a dotting i's and crossing t's. A lot of times we have it on the consent agenda because they have the legal right to be able to go through and do what they ask.
I specifically asked to be a part of each of the situation. I specifically asked to be notified of what's going on and be a part of the conversation. And the planning director asked her specifically to keep me informed. And they, and she said that they would mail out, they would make us aware of the meetings and we were not made aware of any meetings.
We did send out a courtesy notice as a part of this final plat.
We didn't, we didn't get that, so. But the, the Jonathan, I talked to Jonathan and so, and we had no, this was from Friday, so we're not, we're not prepared either. So I can relate to where Tim's at, but I wanted to talk about that because I talked to the Jonathan attorney. And I don't know if you guys are aware, because I haven't heard it coming up in any of the conversations I had. And, and everybody up here was against all the variances. I don't know why you're so for this now. Everybody had issues. Everybody told them that this was unrealistic. And they're using this variance with Unger's, the problem lot, to get re-zoned. Like, well, this is a problem lot, so let's fix the problem by changing everybody's. That's fine. That doesn't affect me any. But what, how does that entail? All of a sudden we have plat approval. That doesn't.
So by, by, by going through the zoning last August, it basically made the lots have to be one-point-two-six acres. And so given the size of Stapleton's lot, that gives them the ability to subdivide to, so that their lots meet all the criteria.
Right. But that's where the trick comes in because everybody says, well, we rezoned it to match that non-conforming lot. That was the rationale. But that's, that's a workaround because you rezoned it so he could do plats. You didn't care about Unger's lot. It's been there for thirty-five, forty years, or however many years it's been. It's a total workaround. I don't understand what, what, how did that even? And beyond that, I, so I talked to Jonathan today. That's an easement. Our driveway is an easement. They don't get automatic, they can't put these plats in and have driving down our driveway and running into five homes on a dead end with no turnaround and no fire hydrants and no, no legal road.
There has to be a fire hydrant.
Unimproved, unimproved, it's an unimproved road and it's a dead end. Where does a garbage truck go? Where does a FedEx guy go? Where does a UPS guy go? Where do all their, all their company and visitors go? It's not, it's a driveway. It's not designed for this type of tra, construction traffic for one thing, let alone the additional homes once it does get done.
There's no, what does a fire truck do? What does, what does an ambulance do? I mean, if, if you're, your heart stops, the ambulance does not have time to turn around.
Every lot in Chaska, I, I, this is my weekend study. I don't know about this stuff, but I tried talking Councilman. I called him twice and emailed him twice. No response. So obviously, he's against us on this thing. I had to do a quick study over the weekend. I had to call the Jonathan attorney. I had to call the, the other attorneys on today to figure out, we had to drop everything. We have company over tonight. So we're doing our best here. But I apologize if we're not totally up to speed on everything. But every lot that gets platted in a situation like this in Chaska gets covenants and goes in with Jonathan, right? Isn't that part of the deal?
No.
And so, and there's exceptions, obviously, there's always exceptions. But this is a situation where there is an easement through Bavaria Estates.
I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but this discussion should have taken place last August.
Right. I get that. For the plating. I don't care about the plan, but, but, or for the zoning.
Stapletons actually, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but if we denied them at this point, given the PRD seventy, they could actually sue the city because they've actually met compliance with PRD seventy.
They have all the legal entitlements.
They have all the legal rights now to do what they want to do.
So this is a building code, like building permit thing? Because all, all the.
It's a zoning.
All the lists on there with the fire department and all the things that they have to meet aren't on the final plat that they put on there as the recommendations.
What is that? I don't.
I mean, they, they meet the zoning. I mean, we don't have any way around that. They meet, they meet the zoning and they have the legal entitlements to be able to split the property.
But is it conditional on those nine things or are you just going to let, just waive those out?
I guess I'm not familiar with what nine things are. Are you referring to?
Probably the conditions of approval. Yeah.
They'd have to meet those, yes.
That's always the case.
So that would be a conditional plan.
But we, we have, we, in our planning process, just so you guys know, we have fire department. We have, we have, everybody sits down and goes through this stuff. There isn't a concern that's been brought up from a public safety standpoint about this.
It's on there from the fire department. There is a concern on there.
But it's something that can be, something that can be addressed in.
How is that being addressed?
I'll let Kevin talk specifically or Liz talk specifically.
It's not on the preliminary plat or the final plat to have a circle at the end there.
This is a private roadway and it is not a public street.
I, I don't understand that.
We own the roadway. They have an easement.
It, it's a private road. It is not a public street. And as such, it isn't required to have the widths or turnarounds that other places are required to. It's a private driveway which multiple properties access off of. It's a remnant from many decades ago that in today's world, you know, we would probably build it differently. But that is not the road that we have out there. You can see the road we have, which is just in the south of it, which is pretty typical of how we construct things today. But that is not the access.
Right, exactly. So as part of us, I don't mean, as far as Bavaria, or the, what's it called? What's our development called? I'm sorry. Bavaria Estates. There's a practical process in the development, right? Right? You've got a road. You've got a turnaround. Everybody has the, the lot minimums. This is just screwy. I don't understand why you're just overlooking all the normal rules that you would have or common sense things that you would have. And so the, the High, High Point Drive is, here's the screwy thing with the association. So they're not in the High Point Association for whatever reason that benefits. But the way it acts, they're in Jonathan and we're in Jonathan. And the way that, the way it works itself out is that we all send our dues into Jonathan and then they give the money to Gassen and they give eighty percent of the money to Tim, who's not in High Points Estates either. And then he.
Yes, we are. Yes, we are. We're all in.
Your data is all wrong.
Well, if they are, you, you're in Bavaria Estates. I didn't say you didn't pay taxes.
No, I mean, we pay to the association.
We're in the association.
Because we, I talked to the Jonathan attorney today and they can't find anything. Because if they, if they're in the association, there should be covenants available that we can look at. That's what we're wondering.
Well, Tony, you knew we were selling. You asked me about buying a lot in August. So I, you know, I'm confused. Maybe for that, if you came and said, how, you know.
Let's, yeah, let's try not to. I think, you know, I, I, I hear what you're saying and everything, but unfortunately, this discussion took place back in August. And I think there was a discussion wrapped around all the things that you're bringing up. And the council at that time elected, you know, to move forward with the zoning change, so.
If they're, if, if they are in Bavaria Estates, our covenants don't allow for replating. So that's going to create a lawsuit.
I think we have to distinguish here between private and public.
Right, because if it's a private covenants, I don't think.
They meet our public. They meet our public, and, and we can't deny them when they meet our public. If there's a private issue, we do not get involved in that.
Right.
You guys, you guys hear Jonathan issues?
We do not endorse Jonathan.
That's a Jonathan association issue.
They have their own board.
Yep.
Private association.
Because there, my neighbor brought, they hit, his next door neighbor built a fort in the backyard, and he brought it to you guys, and I came to the meeting.
Not us.
Not us.
Nope.
That must've been Jonathan. They do hold their meetings here, they lease the space to hold a meeting or rent the space. But that's not a city, we don't uphold their covenants or anything. That's a private thing.
Interesting, I wonder why the attorney doesn't...
And while I have you here, Tony, I did wanna say, the last two weeks I've been moving, so I haven't had access to phone or email. But otherwise, I always return phone calls and emails, so, yes.
Appreciate that.
I just really wanted to let you know that your, that, that your decisions really affect me, and it doesn't really seem that you looked beyond the five acres that are there at the Stapleton's house.
And because it's on a, because it's a private driveway, we don't have, number one, we don't have any access to city services and that kind of stuff, which... And then we have this issue with the association, which apparently we're all in. So, I don't know why we don't utilize their services the way we should. And, and if we are all in the association, then it doesn't allow for, so we'll have to take that up separately, it sounds like.
Correct, yep.
Can I correct a couple of things?
John, why don't you come to the microphone now?
There are three associations, the Jonathan Association, the Association that therein. I know that association, I built it, I've developed those lots. And that's a separate association from Unger, Stapletons, and, excuse me, and McGlennons. But we share, we, Stapletons, Ungers, and McGlennons own the road, and we've given easements to the other parties. So, Tony's data is not correct on any one of those association things. But this is the first I've heard of an objection that's sitting here tonight. And as Mary pointed out, they came and asked us about buying one of the lots last year. So, I'm, I'm very, very surprised. But more importantly, the, the original plating, the original pre-plating of Jonathan called for the three lots that we are currently dividing. And I bought them as a meets and bounds description forty years ago. And we never pursued the plating any further until now. So, th- th- this is not some invention of the Stapletons. This is forty years in the making. And, uh, you, you, we probably need to sit down and acquaint you with a lot of the data. Thank you.
So, just to follow up on that. We came, again, going back, we came to the meeting in August, and they were not recommending anything moving forward in the city council. I don't know if that's a planning commission or the city council, we didn't go to the city council meeting. But they were recommending that they don't approve it. And we, and I said, I stood up here and said that we love the Stapletons, we, we honor the most important things, the neighborhood. We didn't want to have this type of thing. So, if you guys had all these reasons why you're turning it down...
Well, I think, I'm, let me just try to re-go back into the time. So, originally, Kevin, you would know this, it, it, it came in front of planning long before, it was like November of twenty sixteen. At that time, based upon the zoning that was being recommended to be done, the planning commission said no.
They recommended...
Actually, they recommended it.
Recommended, the council came back and said no.
Right.
So, then, we basically redirected to say, go back and take a different, you know, take a different chop at this. And that's when you came up with the new zoning that was amenable to the council, and that's what we approved in August. So, it did go through, you know, you know, for the original council, you know, the original, which would've been a little bit, uh, different, came to the council, said no, went back. Staff did a good job of going back, re- re-looking at everything. Came in front of us again, and based upon the new zoning, we thought that that was, was a fair way of, of rezoning that area out in, uh, out, out there.
And you're describing the workaround to make the plating work, that they wanted?
What do you mean workaround?
Rezoning it to make the plating work. That's the only reason to rezone it.
We, we don't do that.
That's, what other reason would you rezone it?
Yeah, I, I, I've been up here eighteen years, I, I can't think of one time.
I'm not accusing anybody of anything, but I'm just like, why, why else would they ask for it to be rezoned? I mean, what was the reason for it?
I think they asked to zone it, like you said, it's never really been... That was part of the things that we found out. It was never really zoned. It was that...
It was an RLS.
Right.
And so, you know, the rural, the rural land surveys, I think what John's talking about is there was a history and an intent years and years ago to do this. This was really acting on something that was talking about years and years ago.
Right.
And it's, and I agree, it's ridiculously complicated when you start looking at it, because they created a corporation that owns the road, and then gave that plat an easement, so he has an easement across it as well. We're in the association, or they, we have, we have covenants in our association, they...
But did you understand all that when you moved in?
No. No, it's...
But...
And we've just kind, we've gone along with it.
When you go into a rural thing like that, there's, I mean, some of those things, like I said, a lot of that's really, what you're in is, is all a private deal.
We've lived in Chaska for twenty years, we understand how Jonathan Association works. We live in Mr. Rose District over in Timberview Trail. And we pay the dues, we appreciate the association and all of the areas that they maintain. And we were told it was a Jonathan Association, and that's what, we were gonna have it set up. We didn't know that the money was gonna go back to Tim, and if we ever wanna talk about the maintenance or anything going on, that we don't get... It's a whole different thing as far as if he has time to talk to you.
We really, we don't have control of that, though. I mean, that kind of, we're in a hard spot, we can't do it. I mean, that's kind of the things, if you're going in a rural area on a private road, that you have an easement, those are things that really need to be looked at as, as, when you purchase.
Who, who has control over approving building permits on the plots and plats themselves?
The city does.
The city does.
The city?
We are.
Why are you saying you're not involved in this?
But that's different than the government.
We're not involved in covenants, so...
The association's...
The association has their own set of covenants that we have, we have noth- nothing to do with.
They have things that affect buildings, too, that are above and beyond what our city building codes require.
So, if we understand this correctly, once the, for whatever reason it got replatted, had nothing to do with the fact that they, or re-zoned, had nothing to do with the plats or did, nobody wants to say. This is, this is just a cookie cutter, automatic, right? They did the zoning, so they get the plating.
We've been talking about this for two years.
No, once they get the plating, but once they get the plating...
Yes.
The zoning, the plating.
Tonight, tonight is a...
Shouldn't even be here. We need to come back when there's building permits to talk about what specifically is being done, and that the fire stuff's being mad, and the safety stuff, and the roads improved to handle five houses and all that kind of stuff.
When they put a building permit in, then they have to follow all the, if they're, if they're gonna build another house there, they have to follow all of it. It says right in there, fire department comments, two to three lots may have to have sprinkled homes. Says so.
Yep. Yeah, so, I, I mean, and that's where I think it needs to be separated between the conditions there and here, our conditions upon issuing the building permit.
I get that, I get that. So, what, how do we find out, how do we stay involved in that as concerned neighbors? How do we stay involved in that process?
There's no public process involved in the review of a building plat.
This is a private property that's being issued a building permit. And if they meet those, it's their private property. If they meet those conditions, we issue a permit. If they don't meet the conditions, then we don't issue.
I'm asking for your guys' help here, because I've never had an easement. I don't know anything about how they work. But you can't say that, I mean, is that how an easement works? You can, once it's established, that's it?
What do you mean easement to the road? Because your easement, I think, only grants you access to, to your property. You can use that to your property.
We have an easement to cross the road.
That's all that's granting, to use the road.
And they have an easement to cross the road as well.
No, no, they own the road. They own the road. So, you have a legal eas- so, they can't shut that road off on you. They, they cannot do that.
Even though they own the road, you have easement to your property.
You have legal access to be able to cross that road. That's what your easement is.
It's their road.
But it's their road. We have the same thing with the parking lot down here, where the owner owns the parking lot. Thinking of John's parking lot.
So, you're saying it's their road, but they have, they put it in a separate corporation, and they have an easement on their deed showing that they have an easement to cross it.
No, they have an easement that shows that you can cross it.
You can cross it.
They do, too.
No, they don't need a easement to cross their road.
But they have, there's an, there's an easement on, on their, their deed. I mean, I read, I looked at it today, so, but...
There's easement in favor of you, not in favor of them.
No, I'm talking about theirs, I'm talking about theirs, not mine. But because they have that, because they own it through whatever entity that is...
Well, he, he owns the road to have access to their property. So, it's their road to get access to their property. And then somehow, your house was built, and then they're giving you access to get to your house through that road.
Through that road.
Through that easement.
So, they can't...
If you didn't have that easement in place, if you got in a head button contest, they could say, you can't use this road.
You'd have to buy a helicopter to get to your house.
But you have an easement, so that means they can't do that. You ha- always have access to your house.
And because it's a private road, you're saying that all the...
We don't control it.
Whatever happens with building permits, zoning, whatever.
Well, no, we have control of the building permits.
We have control over that, that's separate from the road.
That's separate.
It's, it's...
And I, and I can guarantee our building permit process is very thorough.
It's the UBC.
As someone that's building a property right now, they're very good. And, 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 and I'm laughing because...
They're very thorough.
Because they're very thorough. So, I think, if you're worried about any of those things, you know, I, from personally going through, you know, the process, they're very thorough. And they, they wanna make sure that that property, uh, you know, meets all the guidelines, because the cities, if they didn't, the city's liable. And so, so I can, you know, personally speak that, you know, I think our, our permitting process and our inspectors do a great job, and they're gonna, they're gonna look through this, they're gonna see the conditional, uh, items that have been put inside of this. And, and, and that's, that's what your, your faith has to be, is on that. But, but we don't, you know, on a private property, we wouldn't be out every time that the permitting process... I, I, I assume, being a public, you could come in and say, can I pull the permit? And you could look at it, and things like that, because it's public.
And the, and the, the zoning part was too bad. That was the time to talk about...
And that's what I, I was just trying to, you know, it, I, I like to kind of cut to the chase, and...
Thank you.
I mean, last August was the time for your discussion with us on this. We've, we've made that decision, as I said, tonight. The Stapletons are meeting all the criteria, you know, whether you agree with what we did last August or disagree with it, they meet all that criteria. As I said, if we denied them tonight, uh, they could actually file suit against the city.
Because they meet all of them.
Because they meet our criteria.
They met everything we asked them to meet, so...
And not only do they send notices to properties within a particular radius, they also publish it in the paper. Any public hearing that's gonna be held on is something like that. So, it would've been published back then, too.
But we send it, 'cause we, sorry, Alex, we don't assume everybody's reading the legal notices in the paper.
Alex, I, I read them, Alex. So, I... But I think that another, another part is, you know, I've known John and Mary for a long time. They're great stewards of Bavaria Lake and that area. You know, if this was anybody else, you might take a look and say, wow, I don't know what they're gonna do with that. And my understanding, these are gonna be family homes, um, for their children. So, I, I think that, uh, zoning and plating aside, I think that, you know, you can, you can have some comfort that I think you're gonna have some people that'll, that'll be great.
And that's the part that...
Great neighbors.
I mean, I appreciate your confidence there, 'cause that's the thing with the, where, where our input kind of ended was, there was a preliminary plat approval or denial request or whatever it was. And then all of a sudden, it got approved, and then all of a sudden, that means...
But it wasn't just all of a sudden approved, there was quite a process.
It was about, probably, probably ten months between that, November... Twenty sixteen and December, or August of twenty seventeen, so...
I, I, and I have to look at...
And, and, and we are all sitting up here completely empathized, because we've been up here a while, we understand the process and, you know, how it works. And I, it is complicated. It, it is very complicated, uh, you know, for our citizens. We try to, you know, make it as non-complicated as we possibly can. Um, and I think that from this council and previous councils, we've tried to be even more transparent, you know, with notification and, you know, I mean, we've, how many times have we discussed that, Mark? I mean, numerous times on, so, I mean, I would, I, I think that we're doing all the right things in those areas. And, um, and I think that, uh, you know, through this whole process, I mean, um, the fact that it, you know, was denied in the beginning and then, you know, moved for... I think that, you know, this was a very lengthy process. It was, it was very well thought through and thought out. You probably don't like my, my thought in wanting to make more lots, you know, out, out by the lake. But, uh, I, I think that, you know, the, the city really thought through this, you know, before we got to this decision back last August.
So, we, so our covenants say that we can't further subdivide our lot, but you guys don't get involved in that part of it?
Correct. But if, but if they met, but if they met the, the PR, if they met the new zoning, they could subdivide their lot, correct? And would it matter what their covenant said?
Are, is theirs in PRD-70?
Their, their covenants are their covenants, and our zoning is our zoning.
Is theirs, are they in PRD-70?
No.
Yeah, these guys are not in PRD-70.
Oh, they're not, okay, got you.
Is it 'cause, is, is PRD-70 because of the lake?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep.
We got, I mean, we'd have to change our zoning in order, I mean, but it's, it's prohibited in the covenants to replat. It doesn't say anything about rezoning.
Yeah, we have the ability to set the zoning now. If it's in conflict with your covenants, we don't get into that. But we can set the zoning based on the way the zoning, the way that we think is consistent with what our comp plan is saying out there.
And, and if it's in conflict with the covenants, you don't take that into consideration?
No, that, that becomes, that becomes something privately if the association wanted to challenge you on it.
We weren't involved in the creation of the covenants, and therefore, we are not involved with the enforcement of covenants.
And covenants, if I'm not mistaken, could be more restrictive.
Yeah, I mean, a good example is in, I mean, my house is in Jonathan, and there are certain things the city can approve. But if Jonathan says, nope, you can't do that, then I can't do it, because I've agreed to those, those, I mean, I, they didn't want me to put shutters in my house. You know, the city doesn't care if I put shutters on my house, but the covenant said I could.
That's a separate, totally separate case that you take up.
Yep, yep.
Typically, covenants are filed at the court, aren't they?
Yes. Yep.
And fencing and whatever else.
So...
And you'll find covenants are only as strong as this association is.
Yes.
So... Anne was more concerned, I mean, she, I mean, I, she's home all day with the kids and stuff, so I didn't think about the safety issues as much, but that's...
And the road, I mean, the road is...
It is gravel.
It's repair, it's not even gravel, it's mud and ruts. And so, I don't know how, I get that you looked at the Stapleton lot, but did you look, did it get evaluated how you were gonna actually access those lots? you were gonna actually access those lots? You know, I get those, yeah, lots, homes on the lake, beautiful, right? But I watch people drive by all day flying along and then they gotta, if they're gonna tear down their house, they gotta bring in that crew. They gotta bring in crews to, um, rebuild the house. When the McLennans built the house, they had, uh, cement trucks up and down the entire road that wrecked the road. So that's, that's where my heart is. It's like, well, but how is the road gonna withstand that? But that's not your problem. It's a private road.
Let's see, yep.
So.
And the safety, the safety issues and that, that's more the fire, fire department or who, who cares about that stuff?
Well, we do have the conditions in here that they have to meet that were the concern of the fire department.
Right. They're in there. They're addressed.
So they have to be met to get.
Because they're in official city capacity or whatnot. And other than that, there's not safety issues that are.
Safety issues.
You guys take into concern about.
Safety issues like, for instance.
About the, the safety of the road as far as the, uh, the.
Private road.
Private. Could do whatever we wanted.
To a certain point.
I mean, the whole thing is, is if you continue to make the road not passable, that affects you. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
I mean, if your road is totally impassable, then whoever your association president or association, you should be going to your association and saying, I have concerns. And, and that's really where it has to take, take effect. Cause we can't go in there and tell you to fix that road.
Nope.
Cause if our fire trucks or ambulances can't get in there, it happens.
And we're not asking you to, but we sat through three of the, we missed the most important one, it sounds like, but we sat through the meetings and it seemed like concerned citizens, lots of feedback from here about, you know, future things and safety issues and concerns and the lake and the fish and the, all kinds of concerns that came up. So, but again, that was, that all goes off the table of August when, when it gets rezoned.
I mean, there was a, there was a lot of thought went into this. This wasn't just.
We were at the meetings.
Bring it. No, no, but apparently you, you missed the other one. There was a lot of conversations that happened that it was okay to approve that.
If I remember right, I think the discussion was as long as tonight.
Yep. Yeah. Maybe longer. But I mean, this wasn't something you kind of keep alluding that we just brought it back another day and stamped it. It was not that. Anyway.
No, I'm saying.
Staff spent a lot of time in trying to determine what is the right way to do this.
I'll clarify my statement then, because I'm going by Commissioner Ro. Once it gets re-zoned, the plating is a rubber stamp, so we're wasting our breath. That's, that's the part that I'm just.
They've met all of the zoning.
Clarifying.
You have to meet all the zoning.
Yes.
There can be conditions, as there is with this one, added to that, but.
So when it went from the planning meeting where, and I thought it was a city council meeting, but every, all the city council and planning meetings, there, there wasn't any hope. Then all of a sudden, I'm not sure how, they must've had conversations before the, the council meeting because somebody came up with the idea of the rezoning. And that's where we weren't.
That actually was discussed back in the two thousand sixteen.
In November. I think what was directed at that point was, we can't live with what's been presented. Can you go back to the drawing table and take a relook at this to bring something back that might be more palatable?
I did see that.
To the council.
And I saw suggestions of tearing down a hu- house and two lots and lots of, lots of different ideas that percolated in that.
Yes.
Yeah, cause you guys actually denied the variance the first time.
We did.
And then, but said, yeah, fuck, yep. And said, go back and relook at this.
And the var, so the variance wasn't denied a second time around?
No.
No.
But it, things had changed. It wasn't the same as the one we denied.
It switched from variance to.
Well, it switched from five lots down.
And that's why I lost.
It switched from five lots down to three.
Down to three.
I was, I was at the planning for that. That got turned down. And then it switched to rezoning. So.
That's right. It was five.
When it got switched to rezoning is where.
It was originally five lots.
To be fair to you guys, that's the part that, I mean, if, just to help, to make this happen, that's a good workaround.
Correct.
To rezone it. So.
Do you, do you watch the meeting, the Jonathan meetings that are held here that are videotaped?
I've missed, I, I ended up going back and watching Thursday just 'cause I was sick. I couldn't be here on Thursday night.
Yeah. Cause they are on the website. So if you've missed any of those, you'd be able to catch up by watching those.
We got the website link, so we're able to, to download all the information. A little late, but.
But we do sincerely appreciate you coming in. I mean, it's just unfortunate.
Feel bad for the sponsor, too.
As I said, August, I think, you know, the debate would've been probably another hour or two if you'd been here. Um, but, but, but it was long.
So just for our purpose, concerned, whatever concerns you have, get taken, somebody might have, get taken into account at that.
Absolutely.
Juncture.
Absolutely.
We got the, yeah, we got the idea that it was turned, that the recommendation was turning it down. So again, for, you know, neighborhood cohesiveness, I mean, we don't wanna go against the Stapletons and what they're trying to do. It's just, we have our own concerns in there. So we'll address that directly.
You guys are all good people and I'm sure that you guys will all find a way to.
Yep.
To make this all work well out in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
I have no doubt.
No? Thank you.
Yep, thank you for addressing.
Do you have a motion and a second?
Yes, we do. Motion was here?
Yes.
So, um, again, going back, we have a motion by council member, uh, Ro, second.
Bo.
Bo, excuse me. Second by council member Ro, uh, to, I gotta find the right one, to adopt resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-nine approving final plat for Bavaria Vista.
Yes.
All right.
Well, wait a minute. Could that cause an issue?
No.
Is there any last discussion?
He's just recognizing my second. Okay. Paul had said she motioned for the second. So I just wanted to make sure that.
Well, I wanna be clear, whoever.
Absolutely.
So it was, uh, council member Bo and second by council member East.
Correct.
Sorry about this.
Yep.
All right. Discussion. Again, it was, uh, interesting discussion. It's just unfortunately.
It's the best one. We have this kind of debate up here.
Right.
Well, it is.
I mean, it is.
It's transparent. It's open. It's upfront. But the bottom line is when, when a request meets the zoning, then they're.
And.
Right.
In a normal situation, this would've been consent and we wouldn't even have a conversation.
Exactly.
All right.
Staff has worked very hard to try to find solutions here, too.
Yes, agreed.
Okay. Last call?
Oh, I think that's good.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I've got notification. My contractors there.
And, and point out that it's been a long process that we've gotten through because of staff helped us each step of the way when we were off track. And, uh, thank you. I appreciate that. And I appreciate your taking the time for, to help people understand it. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. All right.
You get to leave. Mary, Mary.
We've got more to go.
Figure this garage thing out, okay? All right. Ten feet?
All right.
And council member Bo, uh, is, unfortunately does have to leave at eight fifty.
See you, Greg.
Eight fifty-five. Um, so, all right, we're gonna move to item number eleven, adopt resolution twenty-eight, or two eighteen thirty-one, approving concept plan for the Harvest West Traditions.
Bet you guys are really glad you were at the end of the agenda.
Did you guys learn anything about city government tonight?
Or covenants or.
You guys are next.
Is there anything we can pick on this one? Cause we're ready tonight.
They're rethinking their association.
Load of the bear.
I got, I got three things.
Mary, council member, the item in front of you tonight is a next phase of, uh, growth in the southwest Chaska area. Uh, this is the Harvest West Development, which would be north of County Road forty-four and just west of Savannah Way, which is the new Collector Road, uh, just off of the new interchange that will be built. Uh, uh, single-family housing development. Uh, Liz is here to talk about the recommendation coming from the Planning Commission to, uh, approve the concept plan.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. We're looking at a concept plan for the Harvest West located in the southwest Chaska area. Uh, so to give you an understanding of where this site is located specifically, um, on the exhibit here, um, it's highlighted in blue. Um, so the existing Harvest Neighborhood is just to the east of this proposed area. This area tonight is specifically looking on the west side of the Collector Road. So the Collector Road basically, uh, dissects, uh, the Harvest Neighborhood right now. Um, so again, we're.
Getting a lot of noise.
Uh, looking at, uh, the portion that is on the west side of the Collector Road, hence the subdivision name tonight and butts up against Highway two twelve. Um, here's another zoomed in perspective, just kind of showing where the existing neighborhood is now. Savannah Estates by Kuzman Homes is kind of in between, um, the existing Harvest Neighborhood and the proposed, uh, new addition. So specifically, the concept plan is asking for a hundred and twenty-five lots as a part of, uh, this proposal, uh, and specifically breaks it down into fifty-four single-family lots and seventy-one villa lots. Uh, in terms of how it fits into the southwest Chaska Plan out here, um, it does stay in line with, uh, the guidance for this area. Um, some specific, um, items of note, uh, for this specific area is that it did call for a public neighborhood park, um, as part of this area, as well as, um, it did denote an electric substation in this area. I do wanna point out though, with the substation, our electric department has taken a look at that, um, and has determined that, um, the suitable location for the substation is on the west side of Highway two twelve, so not in this specific area. And that's mainly for kind of the compatibility of this use and more of the business park area guidance, um, on the west side of Highway two twelve and the fact that it'll be, uh, closer to existing transmission lines planned for that area. The applicant has kind of, uh, broken down their product type, uh, for the overall Harvest Neighborhood area. Um, and that's what you're seeing on, uh, this exhibit now. Um, so, uh, you can see what they're proposing in the red and blue, um, as a part of the, um, single-family and villa lot composition that is shown. So the villa lots are basically denoted in blue and show on the south and, um, east sides, um, of the subject area. And then the single-family lots are basically more into the interior, um, of this area. Um, then they've kind of highlighted, uh, the other areas of the Harvest Development on the east side of Savannah Way or the Collector Road and show kind of the different product types, um, that they propose overall. Uh, they've also given us some conceptual ideas of, uh, what the product type will look like. Um, they have noted to us that Polte Homes, uh, might be the builder out here, but that's still under, um, uh, review on whether or not they're gonna be the ones building out there or whether or not Traditions will be the ones building out there. So Polte has shown, uh, a couple of their product types, the single-family ones on the top there, and then their villa products on the, uh, bottom of this slide. Um, so if you're familiar with the Brooks Ridge Development that's being built up right now, uh, they are building the villa type product in that neighborhood. So it would basically be the same thing, um, for these villa lots. This is the site plan, a little bit harder to read on here. Um, but in terms of how this site would access, um, uh, off of the existing roadways, its main access will occur on the east side, um, on Savannah Way and provide internal access into the site. Uh, they also show a future connection to the north off of Savannah Way that would basically line up with, um, the other entrance into the Harvest Neighborhood on Farm Hill Boulevard. So obviously when this northern area gets looked at, um, that will be another point of access for the neighborhood. Uh, the public park is shown in the middle of this, uh, development. Um, it's composed of twelve acres and showing, um, kind of a, a passive area as well as an, an active area, um, for this, um, park area. Trails and connections. Um, there is a regional trail that will, uh, be going along Savannah Way on the eastern side of it. Um, and will continue along County Road forty-four to the south of this development when that, um, gets reconstructed in the near future. Um, they will be providing sidewalks on both sides of the streets within this development. Um, I think for us, the importance is providing clear connections into this neighborhood park area, being that it is, um, a park that will provide, uh, amenities for not only this neighborhood, but, uh, neighborhoods outside of it. So being able to pu- bring people in easily and convenient and safely, um, is the goal, um, as they move forward. Because of their exposure on three major roads, one being Highway two twelve, uh, another County Road forty-four, and the other, uh, Savannah Way, screening is gonna be a big piece that we will look at in more detail as they come in for their preliminary. Um, so we would stress the importance in being consistent with, um, the development on the east side in terms of what they provided for screening along, along Savannah Way as well as County Road forty-four. And then, um, looking more deeply into, uh, the screening that they'll provide abutting Highway two twelve in terms of buffering and, uh, noise mitigation. Setbacks is also a big thing of note for this area because they abut three major streets. They do have, uh, roadway setbacks from there that they need to keep in mind. Um, there, um, is potentially some wooded steep slopes, um, in the northern portion, uh, more in the park area that, uh, they'll have to delineate and provide in their preliminary, um, and apply the appropriate setbacks to that. Um, there's also a setback from public open space. So with, um, the public park, um, being in the center there, there will be, um, a setback required from that public park as well as the trails leading into it. Um, and then wherever applicable, um, in terms of wetlands that are existing on the site, they will need to maintain a buffer around that. That's not being impacted as a part of this development. And then with Highway two twelve, um, as Matt briefly mentioned, um, there is plans to incorporate an interchange at County Road forty-four and Highway two twelve. Um, uh, so that will provide access, uh, onto the highway from that point. And the anticipated timeline of construction, um, at this point is two thousand nineteen. So circling back to the park piece, which is a very important piece of this plan. Um, so they are showing twelve acres to be dedicated to a public park use. Um, and it has been broken up into active and passive areas, kind of based on the existing conditions out there. Again, the southern portion was more or less, uh, denoted as kind of the active area being more open and available for, um, recreational uses. The passive area has, uh, mostly been denoted as the area north of the wetland. That's kind of in the center, um, of this park area and northern, uh, of that area. So looking at.
Is any of that, is that park at all slated to be any kind of baseball, softball park? Anything like that?
No, no. So we would probably look at, you know, more neighborhood elements, maybe a basketball court, maybe a tot lot.
Football courts?
Perhaps.
Go on, yeah.
Well, just wait. We got plans.
All right, all right.
Yeah, it's not gonna be a full-blown recreational field. That will happen on the south side of County Road forty-four.
Traditional neighborhood park.
Right.
Traditional.
Yes.
Cause it just looks rather large.
It, the northern half is mostly wooded, uh, oak trees on a steeper slope.
So paint gun place.
Paint gun, sure.
That during writing?
So with that piece, for us, the important things about, um, incorporating this type of use is being able to provide adequate exposure and connectivity into this park. Again, it's not just a park for kind of the inner, uh, lots around it, but it is a park that will be able to serve residents across Savannah Way, um, and, and the other vicinity is. So being able to provide connections into the park in a safe manner and convenient manner, um, is what we'll work on, um, with the applicant as they come in for preliminary. So we want them to provide some view shed exhibits and analysis, um, as they come in for preliminary, so we can understand how pe- people see, um, exposure into this park coming from, um, the exterior. So in conclusion, we think the concept plan is going in the right direction. There's obviously some pieces that need to be worked out and, uh, things will get delved into the details during the preliminary. Uh, so with that, we are asking you to make a motion to adopt resolution number two thousand eighteen dash thirty-one, uh, which is approving the concept plan for the Harvest West Development based on the conditions that are listed within there. Happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, the applicants are here as well.
Well, I think as we've been talking about the process, this is, uh, just the concept. There's a long road ahead as this moves through the, uh, process. A lot of time for people to attend planning commission meetings, things along those lines. So, um, it's really just saying this is what we think fits well on that piece of property.
Mm-hmm.
At this point.
Right.
I'm happy to see villa type homes there.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
They'll go quick.
Right.
So villas, are they slab on grade or they?
Um, for these, they were, actually, most of them might have full basements, but I'll let the applicants provide more details on that, on how they envision it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Pat Rossi with Tradition Development. The villas can be either slab on grade or a full basement. We, we've done both. For the most part, we've done, uh, basement models, but we are revising our product now to include the slab on grade. We hear, hear more about the demand for that. And in our discussions with Polte, they, they've mentioned the same thing.
Not very many are here.
And what was the pricing again? I mean, low to high?
Well, for the villas, for the villas, you, you know, in our, in our other areas where we're building that product, we see the mid threes up to around five. And the single families out here, I think we're right about four and up to anywhere, uh, six hundred thousand dollars plus in our other neighborhoods. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Well, good luck.
Thank you.
So, uh, just a few questions.
Yes.
The, the models that you showed us in our packet all were two-car garages. And I guess I really struggle seeing that, cause what that does is make junky neighborhoods. Cause people. because people got their kids bikes and all that stuff. And then what happens is there's constantly cars outside, there's a ton of stuff that can't go inside. And I, I mean, it's my opinion, but I, I just, I find it hard to believe that people are looking for a home with a two car garage. I mean, if you have, own anything whatsoever, there's just no room in them.
I completely agree with you, being the victim of a two car garage household, I can relate quite well. But we...
I worry when you offer that as, that's what we're going to see, that I'm, I will tell you that I'm dead set against it.
All right.
Because it turns into a junky neighborhood, is what it does. It's just because nobody can get anything in their garage and either cars come out or all the junk comes out.
So with respect to the villas, our villa products and I believe the Polte home model, they have been strictly two car garages, but we have had a discussion internally with Robert Thomas Homes and I should add that we, we're in discussions with Polte here for this development, but nothing has been finalized yet. If Polte moves away from this particular site, our in-house builder, Robert Thomas Homes at Tradition Development, is excited to move across Savannah here and gain access. So we've had discussions with President of Robert Thomas Homes about that very comment on our villa product. Is there any way we can do, if not a three garage door type of product, we do tandem garages where we have double stack garages and front to back and on some occasions with two car entry, they fit four cars in there. Our other single family homes in the neighborhood, we offer on the other side of the street, the Robert Thomas products, both two and three car garages.
I mean, like I said, you've got to build with the market, but I'm just saying that I just, I don't know, I just can't see in this day and age that anyone wants to build a two car. If that's what you put out there and people may buy them, but then what does that do in the future for resale? I don't know.
The tandems have been really popular from keeping the price down, but still getting three cars in there.
And that's fine.
Because then you don't have to buy as much land.
Right. And just that there is that place for that stuff.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, we all, the single families, you're going to have snow blowers and lawn mowers and all of that stuff and you've got one or two kids, you've got tons of stuff. So I just, one of those things that I had to say.
A home that I owned before had a double door front, but it was an extra deep garage with a door on the side, a garage door.
Okay.
So I could actually pull a boat in there if I wanted to from the side.
Right, right.
It was kind of cool because it gave me all that room ahead of before what he mentioned, riding mower and the snow blower and all those things.
Right.
I miss that double deep garage.
Because would the villas, would that be an association that's all managed?
Yes. Typically, our villa associations, everything is covered.
The association would be anything like the last one we dealt with?
Shouldn't be. We'll have public streets.
You'll have pavement?
Yeah. Thank you.
Not poking fun.
Thanks.
But my other thing is, is I want to make sure that when you market this, that you market that park as well because I, I just don't want us to come back and be the bad guys. What do you mean you're putting a park in my backyard? I mean, most people wouldn't argue, but I can tell you that there's somebody...
With the park you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay.
Because you took care of the substation because I was going to go off, you're going to think you're going to put a substation in there when that's developed, good luck because that will be a battle, but that's taken care of.
The two things that we tend to see in neighborhoods, which I think are good for people to market is, in this case, a park, but then also, you know, in this case, the timing of the development may or may not be done before or after the interchange is done. So making sure that people know that the onramps are there and stuff like that.
But also that it could be a full interchange someday, that changes that.
Well, it doesn't change that side.
No, but it's still, it could bring in more traffic and more other things and that the other side is going to open up and could be industrial, commercial. I mean, those are the things that come back and then always comes back at us because the realtors never told them what's happening across the road.
Sure. Well, in both cases, both the park and the interchange, we, we view those very positive on our neighborhood.
And I talked about this with Matt and I, I would totally agree with you and the substation was a piece that I was like, we can't start building this and not, and decide to put a substation in three years from, after it starts. We've seen substations a long ways away from houses and they went. I could never even imagine one, so thank goodness that's squared away. But I just wanted to voice my concerns that...
You'll be noted, thank you.
That we do that. Because I've seen how they don't always market anything.
Right. Thanks a lot. Thank you.
Anything else we had?
Uh-uh.
And again, I, I'm with Councilmember Rowe that these, this is the concept and we've got lots, long ways to go.
Yep.
I'll make the motion. Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion when we adapt. Resolution 2018-31.
Okay, so a motion by Geisler and it has to be seconded by, no, I could second it, I guess. Seconded by Rowe to adopt Resolution 2018-31, approving concept for the Harvest West Traditions Development. Discussion.
You've got to make the second, that never bodes well much for the motion, I wouldn't think, but...
Why? Oh, if I have to, yes.
Yeah, if you have to.
I guess we're going to have discussion.
I just have one comment, someone related. I live at 3877 Cover Path, Jonathan Groff, so very familiar with that area. As a neighborhood, love to see that continue to be developed and houses, everything over that. One thing that I would mention to the council, just to kind of keep an eye on as that, is the timing of the 212 development, when that road gets redone because there's, traffic picks up on Big Woods Boulevard and right now, every day as I come home, there's no turn lane, right? So it is, is more traffic increase, I just have a safety issue concern with as, the timing of when that road gets rebuilt because I turn left in my neighborhood and people go on the right turn lane to the other neighborhood around. So, Founder's Ridge, so...
So that's on the south side of 140.
But when that, when that road gets rebuilt, that'll all get turn lanes, right?
Yeah, one thing you'll see on April 2nd at the work session is both the interchange, but then also how the section of road will be as it goes down.
All the way to Guardian Angels.
County Road 44 and includes all that. So the timing in that is going to be 19 and 20. So it should coincide pretty well with the new development that's coming through there.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to figure out because as we put more houses in that road, I know the road will get taken care of, but you know, right now, like, you know, every time I come home, there's someone that skirts around the edge on the right turn lane.
The one positive is working on the interchange first, that'll change the direction people are coming from because then they'll be coming from 212.
Right.
Rather than from downtown and so that should help as well.
That's one of the reasons we're splitting it into two years is so that when the interchange's done, we can get traffic to shift that way and try to have as little as traffic as possible on 44 as it goes down from the new Collector Road.
Yeah.
So when you say two years, that, are they going to do some this year and some...
No, 19 and 20. So 19 will be the interchange and then 20 would be everything, well, County Road 44 will get built up to Savannah Way in the year of the interchange, so that new Collector Road, but then 20, it'll be everything beyond that going down to Guardian Angels Cemetery.
Just seems weird that we wouldn't do it ahead of the, when there's less traffic on it.
One of the things though is giving people a good access out of the development. And so we want to make sure that when we're building the stuff in front of the neighborhoods that exist now, that they have a way to get out into the interchange, so they have a way out of their neighborhood. Otherwise, if we construct it all at once, it's going to be really messy.
Lester, I think for the timing, I was just curious on the timing of that because that's an observation. Love the growth, love the development of that area, but that road right now isn't obviously built for all those houses, but it'll be remedied quickly, so, thank you.
Takes time for the roads to catch up.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries.
That was something fun.
This is one we wish we had tonight.
So number 12, adopt ordinance number 2018-947, amending chapter three of the Chaska City Code relating to Brewer Tap Room On Sale, Brewer Off Sale licenses.
Mayor, councilor, I'll turn this one over to Nate. This has been his pet project.
Yes, getting some suds to town. So as you are all fully aware, we've been working with Jesse Sams and Alex Young to hopefully bring a brewery to town, looking at the former Public Works building off of Highway 61 as you go out of town heading west.
And that's Carver County Public Works, not...
Yes, Carver County Public Works, former facility there. Yep, so as a part of that, in order to have a brewery in town, we need to have our ordinances, allow for a brewery to operate and allow them to obtain the proper licenses that they need to have per state statute. So that's what we have in front of you tonight. You might recall, last January 9th, 2017, the council approved a purchase agreement.
It's hard to believe that's been over a year ago.
It's been over a year, yeah. And we're, good news, we're planning to close at the end of April, so.
All right.
So yeah, we're going to execute on that.
So this is a formality, I mean, because if we didn't do this and...
Couldn't legally serve beer.
This is a condition of the purchase agreement, it also allows them to operate.
Don't see any reason this shouldn't pass.
Oh, gosh.
Anything you need to add to that or are you good?
If you're not looking for any more details, yeah, it's all provided in the staff report.
Get it done.
I mean, it's pretty much just formality.
This is something that'll be, this is going to be awesome.
Yeah, I think it is important for you all to understand too, what we tried to do with the ordinances, you know, a lot of it's governed by what state statute mandates that we do, but there are opportunities for us to make decisions as far as hours of operation and fees and things. And what we really, the strategy we applied there was to just make it align with the establishments that already are selling alcohol, whether it be on sale or off sale. So that brewery can...
They act as the same...
Yeah, you gotta be, you gotta be, if you didn't, we'd have everybody else standing there before it's going to lie.
Yeah, yep.
So.
Good. Nice work.
Thanks.
Any idea when he's thinking of operating? I know that's a tough...
Well, you know, part of the condition of, of the sale too is that, you know, they've got their financing lined up and we have confidence that they're, they're going to be able to execute and put a brewery in place. And so we're, we're working towards that and, you know, everyone's got their feet to the fire now that we have a closing date established, so.
Excellent.
Okay, cool.
Awesome. I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2018-947.
So a motion by Councilmember Rowe.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilor Geisler to, again, adopt ordinance 2018-947, amending chapter three of our Brewer Tap Room On Sale, Brewer Tap Sale Off Sale licenses. Further discussion? I think that's something we've heard a lot of and excited to have it moving another step forward, so. Jesse, get going on it. All right, anyone else?
I'm sure he's watching.
Yeah, I'm sure he's watching. Bated breath. All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, motion carries. Moves us to item number 12A, that would be, what's the right word, approving?
Appointing.
Appointing.
Reappointing.
Reappointing Charles Kelly to the Planning Commission.
And it's another three year term. This would be a second of three.
Second, three year term.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Rowe.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Geisler, approving Charles, reappointing Charles Kelly to the Planning Commission. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post name sign. Motion carries. Moves us to number 13, bills. Anyone? Not entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the bills, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Councilmember Geisler.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rowe to pay the bills. Discussion. Nate, will you call Rowe?
Yes, Councilmember Geisler?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Marijuana shilling?
Yes. Okay, moves us to other business. Anybody, oh, nobody's over here. Councilmember Geisler.
Just one thing that I saw today, I thought was pretty special, that Officer Ness, is that how you pronounce it, Ness?
It's a community service officer.
Yeah, CSO. She helped rescue an injured bald eagle on Fourth and Cedar today.
Very cool.
And it's over at the Raptor Center being treated, which I thought was pretty cool. They put some pictures out there and he was walking up some steps or something to somebody's house, but I don't know what the injury was, but she was out there to help catch that bird and get him some help.
Yeah, good.
So I hope it'll be fine. That's all I have. Thank you.
I said, one quick one, Matt. You know, the upcoming closing of 41, you know, I had some questions just from people who live up in that area.
Yeah.
You know, when are they going to get any type of notice and how's the traffic going to flow, all that kind of stuff?
So the traffic plans are, are still being developed now, but one piece of good news is one of the things that was required in the construction documents is to actually have the State Patrol there for traffic directory during morning and afternoon peaks.
At Pioneer and Hunter Mark or just...
No, at, at Hunter Mark.
At Hunter Mark, okay.
Going down to 212. So our hope with that is that that's going to really help to get the neighborhoods out of there when they're trying to get in and out for work times. They won't do it the whole day, but during those peak times. Southwest Chamber has been meeting with businesses up in the Chaska Commons area just to sort of get them up to speed. I was actually surprised how many people didn't know that that construction was...
Yeah, you know, they've been talking to the building owners, but the tenants didn't know.
Yeah, building owners all knew, but the tenants weren't, weren't aware of it and stuff, so. So we're going through that. Southwest Chamber is going to do sort of like they did with the downtown businesses here and try to work with them about getting out different promotional things and stuff during that construction. As soon as the final plan would be developed, then we would get notice out to neighbors as far as when traffic control and all that type of stuff would be present. But that's going to, you know, they're doing it specific, you know, for the neighborhoods, but also because we need to be able to get ambulances in and out of the metaposts that are there, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
That's all I have.
That was fast.
Yep.
Quick.
Kevin?
Yep.
Nate?
Nothing.
Mook?
Matt? Just a reminder, I'll be gone next week. If you have anything, contact me.
And we will be on spring break, the meeting of April 2nd.
Okay.
I forgot about that.
You won't be here.
Will not be here.
I won't be here either, but Nate will be here.
Be with the family.
Yeah.
It'll be a quick meeting.
Get stuff done.
Yeah, finally.
We're going to be driving straight back from Florida.
Oh, boy. I think you guys should bring up that variant.
Liz, you got anything? All right. I just have one thing, got a phone call today. I, I was about ready to hang up because I thought it was a Robo call or whatever, but we have a lady that lives in Chaska that on this Thursday, March 22nd, is turning 105 years old.
Wow.
She is, it's kind of interesting, he just kind of mentioned that she's getting letters from the president and things like that and she, he thought, this is the son now that I'm talking to, thought it'd be kind of neat to, at least should let me know about if we want to do something, which I think, which I'm sure we will. But her name is Elthea, I, I think it's Nodland, N-O-D-L-A-N-D, but she lives in Auburn Courts and she's, she's in the assisted living. She still is really living on her own. And I thought there were some interesting things in here. She grew up in Iowa, so Iowa pretty much her whole life, retired Arizona and then her mom, he wrote it, mom moved back in 2001 after her dad passed away. Lived independently in Chan Ass until she was 102 and she drove until she turned 100.
Wow.
She continued to play the piano until she fractured her arm two years ago. So they're having a little cake and coffee thing at 2:30 at Auburn Courts. I don't know if it's a public thing, but if you think it's cool enough, I think you could just go over there.
Are you going?
What day is that, Thursday?
I'm going to try to go.
Is it, it's probably, are we, could we do, could we direct staff to do some kind of proclamation that the mayor or...
Yeah, I could take that over.
Could take over to her from the city?
See, he was looking for just a letter congratulating her. But it's interesting, there's a...
You don't need, you need a motion for proclamation?
What you should do is make a motion now to do a proclamation and then we'll make, they'll make it official in the record.
We'll make a motion to do a proclamation honoring her 105th birthday.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Rowe.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Geisler to approve getting a proclamation.
Proclamation.
Proclamation for her, and I'll try to take it over on Thursday.
That'd be awesome.
If not, I'll make sure.
Question and discussion, do you have to be 105 to get that? Because in July, our neighbor who's across the street who still lives in her own house is gonna be 103.
Well, I don't know, I mean.
Mook will be 100 next year.
Yeah. There we go.
And you've known her for 102, huh? I, I think it's neat.
I think it's neat.
If we don't know, I mean, if we don't know about it, we don't know about it.
I think we could say anybody that's over 100. Yeah, that's Centurion, that's a good one.
I think, I mean.
Can't be that many of them out there. We'd be like Willard Scott.
We don't have the Smuckers, we don't have the Smuckers jar, but we're close.
I think that's pretty cool.
We're close, but there's a picture of her, and she doesn't look a day over seventy, so.
Yeah, great jeans.
This one, you could take her to county fairs and make a million, you know, with the quest, guess.
Oh, guess her age?
Yeah, she's young.
Oh, and she looks good.
She lives right by you?
She looks like, no, the 103 one, that's gonna be 103 in July.
Well, this one looks really good.
You ought to see her. Wow.
Amazing. I think that's awesome.
But, yeah, absolutely.
Remind us of that, Luke, so we know.
And when is this? In July, it's early July.
Remind us of that.
Yeah, that's pretty cool.
She, it's in July. Okay.
Um.
That would be fabulous, yeah.
That's all I had, too, I didn't, I didn't really have anything this week. We did, oh, I do, I do want to touch, we did have our second meeting on the City West last, a couple weeks ago, I think, now. Some, the people we're working with came up with just some concepts of what could be in there, and it's really opened the doors on how you look at things. I mean, it talks about whether or not we put a parking structure in there, whether the library's there or not, which I thought at first was a dumb idea, but now it's kind of making sense, and we can utilize other places and still have it downtown, so a lot of interesting ideas, though, it'll be interesting to see what comes out at our next meeting, end of?
End of April.
End of April.
It's, it's pretty neat to go through these discussions, I mean, it's sort of like when you have Veterans Park, or, you know.
But it's amazing, out of these short meetings, all they come out of is.
Yeah, you can sit there for an hour and a half and come out with some amazing ideas.
Yeah.
And to see the versatility of the.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of options that could or couldn't go in there, and so.
Yeah, I'll be excited to see it.
Interesting to see what happens, or what they come up with at our next meeting.
Awesome.
But that's it, so we do have a.
EDA?
EDA meeting immediately following this, so, do we have to take a short break, Mike? Okay.
I disagree with Mike on that, I will, too.
Yeah, I didn't think so either. All right.
I'll move to adjourn.
With that, last call, you already did, motion to adjourn by Councilmember Rowe, second by Councilmember Geisler, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, same sign. We are adjourned. Good evening, and welcome back, we'll open the EDA meeting at, call it to order, at 9:34. Nate, will you call Rowe, please?
Yes, so you're now commissioners, yes, okay, I always gotta remind myself of that. So we've got Commissioner Schultz, Commissioner Bowe, Commissioner Rowe.
Here.
Commissioner Geisler.
Here.
And President Winchittle.
Here.
I never forget that.
He likes it.
It's weird saying that. Item three, adopting the agenda, corrections or additions to the agenda, if not, entertain a motion.
Is that blurry, or is my eyes?
Oh, that's blurry, man. It's terrible.
Eventually.
Oh, yeah.
Motion to.
Well, that's really blurry.
Yeah, that's much better.
Number three or four?
Motion by Commissioner Geisler, second by Commissioner.
Rowe.
Rowe.
Second.
To adopt the agenda, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Posed? That's a little fast. Item four, approving the minutes of the January 8th meeting, corrections or additions, if not, entertain a motion.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Rowe, second by Commissioner Geisler to approve the minutes of the January 8th meeting. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Moves us to item number five, adopting resolution 2018-04, authorizing Executive Director to enter into a listing agreement for the Ernst S. House sites to market for sale to a private developer.
President Commissioners, this is a, an item that's been a long time coming, if you remember back in 2014 when we moved forward with Fireman's Park Development, one of the structures that we purchased on that site was the, sorry, was the Ernst House property, which was located basically at the entrance to the Fireman's Park. As part of that development, one of the things that was identified as a primary objective was to save that structure, it was moved at that time down to a vacant lot that we had down on Walnut Street, just south of Third Street, a lot that we had actually purchased in conjunction with one to the south to put a parking lot in. Shortly after we moved that house.
Can we go cross-eyed?
Shortly after we moved that house, the lot to the north of it had the S. House property, historic S. House property caught on fire. I don't know if it was a good job or a bad job by our fire department that they saved enough of it where it was still a structure that was standing up that we had to take a look at, as part of that process, we did work with the State Historic Preservation Office, and at that time, they indicated to us that they were not leaning towards allowing us to tear down the house because they wanted to see if we could try to reuse it. We went through the economic analysis of it, it became really clear that if we didn't receive a grant for it, it just wasn't economically feasible to do that. We actually went through two grant application processes, and in the end, did not receive that. Second grant application process, when we did that, the state did move forward, did move forward and allowed us to demolish the structure, but did indicate as part of that.
Well, no, you don't have to do that, I think, I have a pretty good, but it, it keeps going in and out, and when you look at it, it actually kind of, I can't describe it.
Take it off?
It's very, yeah, perfect.
Oh, okay. You can imagine it.
Nate thought his new Lasix had just gone bad.
The State Historic Preservation Office did indicate that, that they wanted us to try to do something to have a historic character on that site, especially since we really had created a gap by putting the parking lot in and only the S. House, or Ernst House structure was there. We weren't able to really move forward on that till we finished that process, which was just last year. Since that time, we have worked with an architect to look at what's the best reuse of that site, to try to preserve the historic character of the home, to try to make sure that we recoup the dollars of moving that house over to that site, really have the Ernst House really be a showcase for it being a really nice property, and then reuse the, try to use the S. House property as a way to enhance the value of that property in itself, so that the concept plan, which I won't put it up again, but the, the concept plan, basically what it did, I'll just put it up real quick. Ernst House, there's.
He's got you all, you're not on camera.
Oh, okay, well, it's the Ernst House, there's a glass walkway for two levels to connect that with a structure to the, so the Ernst House, a glass structure that would connect the two together, which creates accessibility to this unit here, and then construct another unit that would be complimentary to the historic look of this building. By taking and putting a glass structure there, it allows us to keep the look of the Ernst House as being separate, but at the same time, be able to easily create accessibility so that we can create basically one, two, three, four, and then on the backside, five, six, very nice-sized apartment units, which with some of the, you know, stuff that we're trying to do to bring in more higher-end rental into the downtown, really creates some nice space, because in essence, the inside of the Ernst House would be created as completely new space, because it'd just be gutted, the outside would, would remain the same. Obviously, the new building would be new on the inside and outside, but would retain the historic character.
How, how similar is that to what the Stabeners did with their Chaska Brick Home when they added on to it?
So that's the one, the old Hazelton Clubhouse out by Chevelle?
Because, I mean, it looks great, I mean, is it similar to that, or no?
Um.
A little different?
Little different, but. The Ernst House portion is probably very similar. The Ernst House portion is very similar, it's the addition that would be different.
Because their addition's more right on it, where this would have a little break with the glass.
It would be, it would look like two structures from the street. That's the thing we sort of like about this, is it really keeps the Ernst House really standing out, because it creates that separation, but at the same time, creates a connection, so you can deal with accessibility and all those types of things that makes those units more usable, so. There will one elevator. Yeah. Instead of having one in each building, you can use, put the elevator in the new part where it's easy to build, and then just have the connection across the hallway, so if someone's up on the second floor, you can have the accessibility right in that way, and so it really utilizes the Ernst House how it should be utilized.
So, that drawing, though, the new part doesn't look very historic to me, and I don't know if it's because it's blurry and I can't see it.
It's a concept drawing, I think what it's, it's probably, it's because it's blurry.
Because it doesn't do anything to me historic, it looks like a new piece stuck on a historic building.
Yeah, I think that's one of the things that, I mean, this is a concept just to say, here's how much space you could fit on here.
All right.
I think when we.
I can deal with that.
Yeah, we're gonna have to go through the process to make sure that we feel it historically complements that. You'll need to go through the HPC, the Planning Commission, you guys. Yeah.
But the numbers jive to paying for the move.
Yep, so we've been working with Greg Anderson from RE/MAX, really particularly because he has an interest in downtown, he's actually sort of, up to this point, just worked, you know, just to help us put together these plans, look at the economics, he has some builders that he thinks could potentially be interested in marketing this site to him. Based on the cost of what it would actually cost to, to do the work on the site, you know, we would, the parking lot in back is really an extension of that parking lot that would help support the lost parking from Highway 41, but it would be a second level, we put the first level in here to actually serve these residential units up in front. So, based on what the, you know, this really gets down to how much can, can somebody pay to make that feasible there, and he thinks between $150 and $200,000 is what we could sell the house and then that vacant lot for, which that, in combination of setting up a redevelopment district, TIF district there, where we would generate probably about, we think about $300,000 of tax increment there, would bring us up to about $500,000 revenue on the site, we had about $507,000 of costs, so it basically breaks even with our costs of actually moving that over, we had a cost for demolishing the house of the, the S. House that we had there, and also then we'd have, we'd build in the cost of actually building the parking that would be supporting that, because we'd want to build and own that parking lot, because we're gonna want to build above it to support the 41 parking. So those costs would be able to be supported by what we think we can get for the property and the tax increment from the site. What we're recommending at this.
Would we be able to get any money for Mendot buying parking?
That's how we build the second level.
The second level.
Yeah, so this is only dealing with the first level of it.
Okay.
And we're gonna build it so it's in phases, so that we build the first phase now, and then put that second phase on when Mendot actually would support that.
Would that S. House qualify for National Register of Historic?
Ernst House?
Ernst House, Matt.
It already is, actually.
And even you put it as attachment, you could still get it?
We looked at a very similar thing when we looked at the Klein Mansion, if you remember when we looked at Fine Dining and different options, we had looked at this exact same option, and it was actually Robert Claybaugh, the historic architect that works with Shippeau that actually came up with this idea, they've used it on the Swedish Institute downtown, so it's, it's not an uncommon way to add value to these historic properties.
But the Ernst House, then, whatever improvement, you get a 35% tax credit, that which should add to the.
If you own and live in it, I think.
So.
Well, if they can get it, all the better.
Yeah, no, you should be able to do it, because down in the ones down behind Old City Hall, we got it, and we did it, Cal and I did it.
So it's, it does help, though, it's a historic property, because there are dollars that you can get access to that. At this point, all we're recommending is, is to enter into a listing agreement with Greg Anderson from RE/MAX, and just make sure that you're okay with the, the concept of what we're talking about, because what we would do from a marketing standpoint is he'd get a sign-up on the site that basically shows this rendering, so that people have an idea of what would be supported there, so they're not going into it blind. They know generally what the city would support on that type of site, and generally what, what we'd be asking for, for, for the selling of the property. The hope would be is if we get it on the market here in April, that we really could come up with some kind of a buyer during the summer months and start that planning process.
So there'll still be parking behind it?
Yep.
Still back there?
Yeah, so that, the design of the parking actually would connect it in with that parking lot that's going next to the Ernst House right now, that goes back, and then it would turn at a 90-degree angle and go behind the houses then.
Okay, are they gonna, remember, somebody questioned the large stones that they used on that retaining wall, is that gonna be changed, or is that staying that way?
Yeah, I can't remember, that stays like that?
I thought you said it was. Around the block.
That's what I thought.
That's why I hesitated a little, I know Matt had talked about that.
Not the.
It wasn't the block that was chosen or something.
I had, I, I know he had said something about the block type.
Because that came up almost right away. That block wasn't right, didn't look weird.
I mean, that whole site needs to be cleaned up to make it look.
Yeah, I mean, it's still an active site.
Yeah.
Yeah. And keep in mind, one of the things that will be constructed behind there is the Paseo that goes from Second to Third Streets, so that whole alleyway back there is gonna look a lot different, it's gonna be, you know, benches and streetlights, and, you know, it's gonna be a real pedestrian-friendly type of a, the space back there, to really get people from the shops down Second Street up to City Square Park, and then not have to walk on 44, or 41 to do that.
Is that where that mural is, that's on the side of the building?
Yep.
Are you gonna repaint that, because it's so cool. Need to get that go away. Very cool mural.
Good.
That's it?
Any questions?
Yep.
We needed to do, we gotta do something, I mean, we're, we're getting beat up on that thing all the time, and that's, that's one I've said from the get-go, you know, we tear it down, we lose, we move it, we, we lose, you know, this now, at least, if, if we can make this happen, at least something positive coming out of it, and, you know, ultimately, over the years, we should get our money back.
Yep.
But we have to preserve our history, too.
It was a right, tough decision, but right decision to move that house. I can't imagine tearing that house down, it would have been.
Well, it kind of goes like, if the city starts tearing down historic homes, how do we tell somebody else to preserve theirs?
I mean, that's a, I mean, I think we have to think about that throughout downtown is, I mean, it's a very good point, is, you know, if we expect historic building owners to invest in their properties, I think we have to lead in that, too.
Yeah, agreed.
I think we're a leader there, there's no doubt.
That was a project.
I'd love to see that wrapped up by the summer. I mean, just to get somebody moving on it, whether they get it done or not, that's another story. But just the fact that we have, we have the interest, someone sees the interest is there, that just tells you, it's another thing in the right direction where we can go on.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve resolution twenty eighteen oh four.
Motion by Commissioner Geisler.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Row, adopting resolution twenty eighteen oh four, authorizing the executive director to enter into a listing agreement for the Ernst S. House. So, again, last call of discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Who carries other business, anyone? Any news on Chaska building?
We continue to work with Formaco on entering into a purchase agreement. So, they've expressed interest in taking about three, three and a half acres of that site and putting up something like a thirty to thirty-five thousand square foot building on that site. So, they do, they're in the biomedical, biotech field. They do coatings for guide wires that allow things like stents and, I don't know, other medical things to be placed in the body.
They do.
They do.
Yep. And you can imagine that a guide wire that's slippery is probably better than one that's not slippery.
So, a thirty thousand building, what's the cabinet shop? Any idea?
It's probably twenty.
About same?
About twenty.
That's about twenty.
Oh, so a little bigger than that?
It's a little bigger than the cabinet shop.
All right.
It takes up, I mean, basically, there'll only be a third of that site left then.
Yeah.
I mean, but that sounds pretty solid.
Yeah.
He's been in it almost every week.
Yeah. We're working with Deed to get dollars from them into the project.
Oh, so we haven't done any closings or nothing like that yet?
Yeah, yeah. We've got the purchase agreement, the development agreement, all that on their side to review, and they're reviewing it right now.
We need to get the city of Savage to sign off on releasing them as a business over there.
Wow.
So, the city administrator is retiring. He retired last Friday, so I called him on Wednesday and asked him. So, this could be...
Well, they don't have to sign nothing, do they?
Yeah, they do.
Why?
So, whenever we go for state dollars for a business that's moving from another town, we have to get permission from that city to basically get those, yeah, basically.
I didn't realize that.
You gotta be careful, you ask at the right time, I guess.
Yeah, they're looking to bring probably about fifteen jobs immediately, and then maybe doubling that within three to five years. So, it's a good group to be bringing in.
Any word on when they would start doing demo on those buildings, across from the Curling Center?
The hotspot.
Hotspot, yeah.
So, I know that JB, who's leading that redevelopment, has submitted into the planning process. So, hopefully, they'll be able to be on the, would be the April meeting for their preliminary concept.
So, did we get sign-off then from the...
TDA?
TDA? Oh, yeah.
We're gonna continue working with them through the process.
We, we did go to their board meeting, I don't know, three, four weeks ago, a second time, and we did get them to conceptually say if we can meet certain conditions that they would sign off on.
Okay, good.
So...
Is there any opportunities for fire or PD to do any kind of drills or exercises in that, especially that large building?
Potentially, yeah.
I mean, that would be up to the police chief and the fire chief, but...
Yep.
That's a good suggestion, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, where they could go in and really kinda do some damage and not have to worry about it. But I know it's all timing thing, but it's always, you just don't get an opportunity to have structures like that. Especially the Pearson Gasor, it's got basement. So, it really opens up a lot of avenues that you wouldn't otherwise have.
Yeah.
So...